Noting the hour, I'm calling the Acton Select Board meeting to order.
First, since September, I have been attending DPW Building Committee meetings to advocate that sidewalks be constructed on Forest Road in conjunction with the proposed $40 million DPW building project for the safety of the people and pets in the neighborhood. I am here today because I believe that the Select Board can actually make the Forest Road sidewalk project happen. I estimate the cost of adding sidewalks to Forest Road to be about $950,000 or about 2.5% of the current DPW building project budget. Second, sidewalks on Forest Road would make biking and walking safer for all of Robbins Park, not just for Forest Road. With sidewalks on Forest, Robbins Park residents east of Hosmer Street would be able to walk from the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail to Alcott Street, then to Whittier Drive via Longfellow Park, then to the sidewalked Forest Road to both the Acton Arboretum and to the Luther Conant School. From 2013 to 2019, two of our children attended the Conant School, but even though we lived only about 3,000 feet from the school, they were not able to safely walk to school due to the lack of sidewalks on Forest Road. Third, I respectfully request that the Select Board commission a sidewalk survey and plan so that it can be brought to town meeting in conjunction with the DPW building project. I note that the property line on "my front lawn" is about 10 feet from the roadway, about twice the space needed for sidewalks. The width of Forest Road in front of my mailbox is about 27 feet. Fourth, I understand that sidewalks were provided for the safety of the neighborhood near the North Acton Fire Station, which was completed in 2022. One of the reasons for prioritizing the North Acton Fire Station sidewalk project was that a new governmental function was being introduced into a residential neighborhood. By this standard, sidewalks on Forest Road are now 55 years overdue. Also, the minutes of the April 5, 2021 Select Board meeting state that there was a shared winter streets and spaces grant from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, Mass DOT, to create new connections to the Nathaniel Allen Recreation Area, aka Nara Park, and the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail by building a sidewalk on the north side of Harris Street and connecting the new North Acton Fire Station to the existing sidewalk on Main Street. May I get a copy of this approved grant application so that we can use it as a model for the Forest Road sidewalk project? Fifth, I understand that "everyone wants sidewalks," but not everyone has had 55 years of industrial traffic in a residential neighborhood, speeding traffic going to the dump, Town of Acton vehicles fueling up, the very dangerous hazardous waste day traffic jams, and a $40 million multi-year construction project. Sixth, it does not take a lot of imagination to understand that those most impacted by any construction project are those in the neighborhood of that project. Perhaps we need a "pedestrian two and a half" bylaw to permanently set aside 2.5% of a construction project's cost for the safety of people and pets. Residents should not have to beg for safety improvements in their neighborhood. The DPW stands for safety. Sidewalks stand for safety. As Project for Public Spaces founder Fred Kent said so wisely, "If you plan cities for cars and traffic, you get cars and traffic; if you plan for people and places, you get people and places." What is true for cities is true for towns. Seventh, and finally, for Acton residents who do not have the luxury of attending meetings like this in person or via Zoom, I have summarized the history of the Forest Road sidewalk project on one of my company's websites, giantpeople.com/acton. Giant People LLC was founded in 1999 and is a single-person LLC owned by me. Thank you. Eric Heels, 17 Forest Road, Actonian since 1995.
Thank you, Mr. Heels. Your comments are noted and memorialized, and, you know, we don't necessarily answer you today, but we will take your comments into consideration.
That's fine. I'll send you a copy of the written remarks. I write them down so that I don't forget anything.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you.
John, oh, is there a resident online?
Yes, Madam Chair, there are six people online, one with their hand raised.
Great. Go on, online.
Deborah Symes should be able to speak. Hi, thank you, Deborah Symes, Concord Road. Pardon me. So, this is for the Select Board and the Town Manager, really, and probably the Police Department, though they're not here tonight. I'm sure, well, I know I'm not the only one, pardon me, the only one who is feeling concern about the kinds of impacts that the incoming administration may have on all sorts of people. I don't have any idea what the Select Boards and the Town Managers or the Police Department's purview really would be in regards to folks in our community who may be at risk, and I'm thinking particularly from around this deportation stuff that threatens to happen. So, I really am asking you to put your heads together and figure out, you know, sort of what the approach of the town is going to be in terms of protecting residents if, you know, stuff goes down, as they like to say. Yeah, that's really it. I'm asking, I don't know what's possible, but I am aware, for instance, of the Minuteman Motel and the folks who live there, and I'm sure there are others, and I really am imploring you to consider how we might protect vulnerable residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah. Moving on, Chair update. I just wanted to make two announcements. Friday was a great town day. I attended along with several other Select Board members, the swearing-in of three new Acton Fire Department employees, and the promotion of four of our existing firefighters. The event had a wonderful turnout of town employees, family of firefighters, and the Acton Fire and Police Departments. These events are very heartwarming, and it is truly wonderful to see the support from the town turn out in support of their fellow colleagues. It doesn't get any better watching family members pin their loved ones at such an event. And the second fun event on Friday was the ribbon cutting for Stop &amp; Shop at Kelly's Corner. The transformation of the building and the parking lot is just incredible, and just seeing the parking lot filled with cars was so satisfying. The ribbon cutting was well-attended by many members of the Stop &amp; Shop management and employees, town staff, of course, town committees, some members from the Economic Development Committee, the Finance Committee, Chief Arnim, Chief Kogan, several other firefighters in Acton Police. Although the Acton Police Department, sorry, I wrote a book, the Acton Police Department, they were attending their event Coffee with a Cop also at Stop &amp; Shop. They were conveniently nearby to show their support for the grand opening. Senator Jamie Eldridge, who was instrumental in nudging Eversource to complete necessary work to make it possible for the opening on Friday, was also in the house with Representative Dan Cena, and they took part in presenting a huge check to the Acton Food Pantry from Stop &amp; Shop. Also, a little side note, a woman who lived in Rhode Island approached me, she was representing Stop &amp; Shop's management and not really familiar with Acton at all, and mentioned to me what an adorable, beautiful town Acton is, and she and her colleagues were so impressed by the magnitude of support by town staff. So, that was my experience. Any other updates? Oh, manager, sorry.
Thank you. Yes, it was a fun day on Friday, lots of exciting things happening. I'm pleased to announce that we have awarded a contract or about to award a contract for the rehabilitation and renovation of the historic property located right here behind Town Hall, 17 Woodbury Lane. This is a project we've been working on for many years, and I'm very excited that we've gotten to a point now where we have the funding secured, we have a contractor identified, and we're going to break ground in January, February, and that's going to be something special next year for us to enjoy. I want to thank Tom, Assistant Town Manager Tom Bejian. We were fortunate to get a federal earmark from Lori Trahan, but the amount of work that's required to actually get the funding from an earmark is something that we didn't really know. But Tom figured it out, and he's about three months into that paperwork, but we have the money and we're very excited. So, thank you and look forward to some activity back there in a property that's been an eyesore, really, for decades, so, very exciting. And thank you to the CPC also for funding part of that project. I also wanted to mention that we received a grant from the state to do a, it's from the Community Compact Efficiency Program, and the grant is to look at our fire department operations and to look at the way we provide fire department response, both for fire rescue and for ambulance, look at the current service delivery models, the number of stations that we're deployed from, and it'll provide some opportunities to do some pilot programs and learn about different ways that we may be able to serve the community into the future. That work will include community engagement, input from the Select Board, local officials, staff, members of the public, and it will look at potentially looking at different station deployment models where instead of having four stations and the headquarters at the PSF, having less than four operating for a few months to see how that goes. Those are all things that we'll sort out in 2025, but I just wanted to let you know that we got the grant for $57,000, so we have a partner to help us work through that and make sure it's a very inclusive process. Remote meetings, we are benefiting from temporary provisions in state law that allow us to have remote meetings for this board and other boards. Those provisions are going to expire in March of 2025 unless the legislature passes a permanent law that allows us to do that. I expect that something will happen, but I don't expect that it'll happen until March. So, my recommendation for us as an organization is to plan that they'll continue in some form or fashion, and if for some reason we learn in early 2025 that it's not looking good, we'll start to make adjustments to how we plan our meetings out for the calendar year. But I've already heard from a few committees, like the Nursing Services Advisory Committee, and they were concerned about whether they should be meeting remotely, and I just said yes, plan on it, and if something changes, we'll figure it out. Finally, Gardner Field, we took the temporary construction fencing down. It looks awesome. There's a few finishing touches that are still remaining, but it's really something that we're proud of over in West Acton. Check it out. And in North Acton, or at least on the way to North Acton, the new DC Fast Chargers are very popular, so if you have an electric car and you haven't used it yet, I recommend you check it out, and it's right across, it's right at Veterans Ball Field. Thank you.
Thank you. Alyssa?
Thank you. I just wanted to add my appreciation, as well as the appreciation of a lot of people in town, for the relocation of the chestnut tree at 17 Woodbury. I thought you were going to mention that, John. If you follow the town's social media, you would have seen the photo of the chestnut tree in bloom, they have really dark pink flowers, so it had to be moved from 17 Woodbury because that's where the septic is going, and it's now outside of the Memorial Library across the parking lot. So, I'm super happy that we were able to save that tree. I just have a couple of announcements. The Acton Water District has set their annual meeting, so mark your calendars now. It's going to be on March 19, 2025, at 6:00 PM, and it will be at the Memorial Library. And then I also wanted to bring everybody's attention to a couple of provisions in the Economic Development Bill that was recently approved by the state legislature. So, in addition to allowing craft beers to be sold at farmers' markets now, the legislature has eliminated the citizenship requirement for liquor licenses, so that removes a barrier to folks with permanent legal status to be able to operate successful businesses, especially restaurants. I was actually the one who asked our last liquor license, I think it was for Brumantes, for the Luna Mexican Restaurant over at Nagog, because they hadn't filled out every single item on the application. So, I was the one asking, are you a citizen? And I'm so happy that we don't have to do that anymore.
Dean?
Thank you. The Community Preservation Committee has begun its hearings on the various proposals that have been presented. We'll be doing that for the next month and a half later on in this meeting. You know, the Select Board will be providing some input as well. So, that process is moving well. We have received a bit more money than we'd planned on, but we're still looking at about an $800,000 difference between requests and funds to fulfill those requests. The Acton 250 Committee is continuing to meet and continuing to organize speaker programs and some other events, so check out the town website. It will be updated shortly with more information. We'll be running events certainly at a fairly fast clip for the next couple of months, and then we will, under our charge, we will continuing to do some less intense activities for the next year after the April 19. Thank you.
Thank you. David?
Yes, a couple of things. First of all, this is our first regularly scheduled meeting since the special town meeting, and I just wanted to say that in the special town meeting, town meeting authorized us to preserve the 33 acres on Weatherby Street and also authorized two collective bargaining agreements and authorized us to order a new ambulance. Madam Chair, may I share something quickly?
Yes.
So, also, going on currently is a new, an updated version of the town's housing production plan. There's a survey outstanding if people would like to give input into the housing production plan. You can, if you're watching on Acton TV or play it back later, you can pause the video and scan the QR code or type in the URL there. And finally, I would like to say on a personal note that I intend to run for reelection as Select Board in the April elections, so I'll be pulling papers and gathering signatures, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Jim?
So, Acton, like lots of towns, runs on committees. Together, between the five of us, we have liaisons out to 50 different boards and committees, and the one committee that is the gateway into all that is the Volunteer Coordinating Committee. So, I wanted to give a pitch for people that might be interested in, you know, meeting with people who are interested in serving town committees, being aware of where the vacancies are, and if we get enough people back on the Volunteer Coordinating Committee, then that committee would be able to do more active outreach to help find new people because there are a number of committees that are down. I did get permission from the manager to sometime soon to put up an advertisement in Town Hall to describe what the Volunteer Coordinating Committee does and to, you know, invite people to get themselves on that committee. Right now, they are at three people. Their regular membership is five, so they are exactly at quorum, so if one person can't be there, they can't have a meeting. And they're allowed two associate members. So, you know, anywhere from two to four new people in the VCC would be a great thing for the way we run things in town. In terms of the other committees that I'm the liaison to, I think the committee that, the commission that most needs new people is the Commission on Disabilities, which is the state-chartered group that looks out after accessibility issues in the town, reviews variance requests, and looks into how to educate around disability issues. And finally, I just got to say, looking at the agenda, looks big. I am, I just want to say I am happily available for additional meetings between now and the end of the year if we need them. It looks like there's a lot of end-of-year stuff that needs to get done.
Thank you. So, moving on to our first public hearing, which will be continued to, the applicant has requested to continue to January 13, 2025, at 7:10 PM. And next up is our 7:10 PM All Alcoholic Beverage License Transfer, Great Road Seafood Sales LLC to Seafood from Heaven LLC, 77 Great Road, Acton. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 12 of General Laws that the Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room, 204 in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton, and virtually on Zoom at www.actonmass.gov/meeting/selectboard on December 18, 2024, at 7:10 PM, on the application of For-In-All Alcohol License Transfer from Great Road Seafood Sales LLC to Seafood from Heaven LLC, located at 77 Great Road, Acton. The application is on file in the Select Board office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Good evening. How are you?
Can you turn on that microphone? Just press the button. There you go.
Oh, thank you so much, yeah. My name's Attorney Vinnie Pusatieri, and I have the privilege of representing Ivan Valentin and Richard Reynoso, who is here with us this evening. These two gentlemen have partnered to organize Seafood from Heaven, and they would like to be purchasing the Atlantic Seafood Grill.
Great, thank you. Any questions from members? David?
Thank you for coming in today. Just wondering if you intend to change the structure of the restaurant, the number of, you know, the arrangement, number of seats, the type of service, that kind of thing?
My clients intend to run the restaurant substantially similar to exactly as it is. The current owner has graciously agreed to provide some training during the transition period, actually before the transition and then after the transition, and then also remain available to consult and advise. The, what you see when you walk into the restaurant will be the exact same thing as you see it after my clients purchase it.
Thank you. And when do you expect the transfer to take place?
This is the first step, and then should this board approve this application, it would be in the hands of the ABCC. Once that occurs, we'll close the transaction here shortly thereafter, within a couple of weeks. That process with the ABCC could be two or three months, depending upon their backlog. They have a lot of end-of-year things that they do at this point in time as well.
Thank you, and best of luck in taking over the restaurant.
Thank you, appreciate it, guys.
Jim?
I was just curious where this wonderful name came from, Seafood from Heaven?
It was actually my partner's idea. Good choice. They are restaurateurs, they have a place in, breakfast place in Leamester, it's the beloved North End Grill, and they organized Eggs from Heaven to operate that, so it seems to be a theme.
Okay, well, it's always good to have more heaven in Acton, so thank you.
Thank you.
Alyssa?
Thank you. I'm glad that the restaurant is changing hands and it will stay open because I know it's a very popular restaurant in town. I have a question, and I don't think it's necessarily for you, it might be for staff, but there seems to be some discrepancy in the number of seats, so I just want to make sure that we have a handle on that because I saw the building department had listed 106 seats max, and the Select Board from years ago had set it at 134 for a special permit, and I see in the application that it's about 150. It might be 150 now, and you're planning on 150, so I just want to know where we are.
Sure, can I address that?
Yes.
So, I've been working with the Select Board's office, the Board of Health, and the Building Department on those discrepancies, and I tried to, I put a footnote that clearly identified what I think the problem is. So, if we look at town government, sometimes it's in different silos, so we might have the Board of Health here, and we may have the Building Department here, and then we have the Fire Department here, and when we're talking about a liquor license, we're talking about capacity for a number of people that could fit in safely. So, architectural renderings and the drawings that I've attached to the plan, the architect identified seating for 150 people. The Building Department 106 inspection may be before a time period where the, before the function room came on, so the 106 to that is a little bit of, and the outdoor patio. So, those two areas I don't think are included in that number, and that's something that I'm continuing to look, work with the Building Department on. The 134 number comes from a different segment of government, and that is from the septic system. So, the septic system basically says that there's only a certain number of people that can be serviced in this type of restaurant, and that number is 134. The restaurant's governed by a special permit decision from the zoning board, yet another function of government for, and they said, they incorporated the 134 number in their decision. And the concept that's in the special permit is kind of a, it's a flexible seating arrangement. Basically, you can have 134 people. If you're going to have a full function room, you may not be able to have the patio open. Or as what we were discussing when we were analyzing the problem is, well, maybe some of the patio seats have to be pulled up and some of the dining room seats. As long as the total number is at 134, we're in compliance with the septic system requirements that got codified into the special permit decision. So, the 134 number really is kind of the governing number. The 150 on the plan and for the liquor license application would be to say, well, we could, we have these number of seats, and this is what the arrangement will look like. It's going to have to be flexible to stay underneath that. If for some reason the driveway gets opened up and septic system work gets done, my client expressed an interest in maybe expanding the septic system, and then that could elevate the seating arrangement. So, I think the way that we're looking at it is, the Building Department 106 is, the restaurant is primary before the function room was added. The 134 is the limitation because of the septic system, and the 150 is the limitation that the architect rendering has shown us. So, that, I think, is the way I understand those numbers.
Dean?
So, what is the capacity of the function room? I'm aware of at least one organization which has started to line up some monthly meetings there, and just be handy to know how many folks we might expect.
Was that on the drawing, was that 50? It's, I believe it was 50, yes. 50 seats on the drawing? 50 seats. Yes, sir, 50 seats.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just would just finalize with one other thought on that. So, I'm asking for your approval on really two components of the application tonight. One is to approve the transfer and my client as the manager of the new entity, and the other application is, we're just clarifying some details that are in the description of the premises. When I reviewed the ABCC record, it wasn't clear to me that the patio was clearly part of that description, so I wanted to make sure the function room was clearly labeled and that the patio was clearly labeled so that we just wouldn't have any problems with the folks in Boston. So, that would be the two parts of what we're asking for.
So, this is a work in progress, right? Are we ready to approve those two items?
I think you have to call for feedback from the public.
Are there any comments from the public in person or online?
No hands raised out of the eight people online.
Thank you. Any more discussion or?
So, operationally, we need to make sure that the seating aligns with the septic maximum, and it sounds like...
maximum. And it sounds like when the patio is open, some seats inside are not available. When the function room is open, some seats in the, are you comfortable with what language is in there now if we're approving? It's not going to change after we give our approval, right?
No. What I'd like to do is have the seating capacity as the architecture's rendering. Obviously, it gives my clients the most flexibility. And then if for whatever reason the septic system gets improved, then the liquor license is, is going to be fine. Until that point, the town, I have spoken with, and I don't remember the gentleman's name, so I apologize to him, with the Health Department, and it was very clear that, that the 134 seat limitation is a Health Department limitation. So, so we'd be, I guess either way would be a difference without a distinction, except for the fact that if things changed in the future, then we wouldn't have to come back to address the liquor licenses.
David?
I move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Are we, do you want to have any more discussion? David?
So I, I, you know, our licenses, I don't think contain like the use of the patio and the function room. I suppose we could add that to the motion. But I don't think that's actually necessary. I mean, I, I don't know what feeling is whether I should add it. I don't think it affects, you know, what we do for licensing. So I can make a motion if you'd like. I move to approve the license for, the all alcohol license for Seafood From Heaven, the all alcohol license transfer for Seafood From Heaven located at 77 Great Road, Acton, and operating as Atlantic Seafood.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you so very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Happy holidays.
Every one of the cities back in the town has been very helpful.
Oh, great. That's good to hear.
Very nice experience with your business here. Thank you.
Next up is our 17, 7:15 public hearing, malt and wine liquor license transfer to Shaki Corporation to RSY Store LLC, 465 Great Road, Acton. Notice is hereby given under Chapter 138, Section 15 of the General Laws that Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 in the Acton Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton and virtually on Zoom at www.actonmass.gov meeting SB on December 16th, 2024 at 7:15 on the application of for a malt and wine license transfer from Shaki Corporation to RSY Store LLC located at 465 Great Road, Acton. The application is on file in the Select Board Office and may be viewed during normal working hours. Hi there. Good evening.
How are you?
Good.
Members of the board, my name is Angelique Eliopoulos. I'm with the law offices of Eliopoulos and Eliopoulos in Chelmsford, Mass. And I am here tonight to present to you, as you just said, the application for the transfer of the liquor license at 465 Great Road, which is an off-premises malt and wine beverage license. I'm here with the applicant, Mr. Shashidhar Boghely, who's the owner of RSY Store LLC and the proposed manager under the license. Just to give you a bit of background about your applicant here, he's a longtime entrepreneur and restaurant owner. He's had several franchise business before and is currently also the owner of a beautiful restaurant in Chelmsford, and in that role has had much experience with both the ABCC and the laws and regulations that govern both, you know, the serving of, of alcohol. And so he will be at the store full time and certainly will ensure that all of the employees uphold all the statutory laws of both the ABCC and the town, of course, has a, you know, perfect record, never sold to a minor, never had any violations or any complaints. And so the applicant will continue to operate the store in substantially similar manner as the convenience store is run today, although he will be upgrading the point-of-sale service to have a way to scan the IDs. So right now their system doesn't have that, but they'll be upgrading that system. So the IDs will be scanned, has the ability to scan different types of IDs as well, so that the service to minors is completely eliminated. So you have our application, all the supporting documentation, and certainly we can answer any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. Any questions from the board or no? It's fairly straightforward. Jim?
Just trying to learn when I can. When you had, you know, a number of towns that you could have chosen to open up in, how did, why Acton?
I go to Arasam to drop my son over there. I'm very familiar with Acton. I know a lot of friends living in here. One day, one of the friends said, he was talking to the previous owner, and the owner showed interest to sell the store. And I always wanted to have a liquor store license, not this restaurant one to have a startup with. And I already have Subway restaurants. So this has a deli as well in there. It seems like a good one to go with, with its smaller investment to start with and stay there. That's one major reason for me to go for there before going into a bigger step to go own a liquor store. I want to have a practice on a smaller one, then go for a bigger one.
Great, and welcome to Acton.
Thank you.
Your questions? Thank you. Do we have any questions from the members of the public, online or in person?
Nine people online with no hands raised.
Thank you. Are we, David?
I move to approve the transfer of the malt and wine license from Shaki Corporation to RSY Store LLC located at 465 Great Road, Acton, and operating as Acton Convenience.
Second, is this one of those things where we need to close the hearing first?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Should I repeat my motion, or are we okay?
We're, we're good.
Okay.
And I had a second. So all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Did you second?
Jim's seconded.
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So 7:20, a site plan special permit 0624, 2024, 492, AHC Incorporated and Thomas Buckborough, 358A and 358B, Great Road. This hearing is continued from, I think, November 18th, or October 7th, actually. The Acton Select Board will hold a public hearing on December 16th, 2024 at 7:25 PM, continued from October 7th, 2024, in the Francis Faulkner Hearing Room 204 at the Town Hall, 472 Main Street, Acton and virtually on the application of AHC Incorporated and Thomas Buckborough for a site plan special permit under zoning bylaw section 10.4 at 358A and 358B, Great Road. The proposed project consists of construction of two additions to the single-family dwelling and the rebuilding of the office space into a mixed-use building consisting of retail space and three dwelling units. Application materials and how to participate remotely are available online at an Acton Town Hall. Welcome.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Paul Kirchner from Stamsky McNary. We are the engineers for the project at 358A and 358B, Great Road submitted by AHC Inc. and Thomas Buckborough. So it's been a few months since we met with the board. The last hearing, I believe, was in August, the last time we actually met with the board. So in that time, we have responded to the comments made by the board's peer review engineer, as well as comments made by some other town staff. Additionally, we did submit a special permit request to the ZBA for which we received approval. And just a couple of weeks ago, we received approval from the Conservation Commission to permit the proposed work within the various resource areas on the site. Earlier this month, or it was probably late last month, we received a follow-up comment letter from the peer review engineer, which we responded to. Late last week, I received another email from the peer review engineer, so this time not in a written letter format. So at this point, there seems to be one outstanding issue on that front. At the request of the peer review engineer, we did make a request for a couple of different waivers, one of which is to waive the front yard screening requirement, as that is a pre-existing nonconformity. So that is proposed to be maintained. There, we have submitted a landscape plan, which does provide some new plantings along the property frontage. But given that the setback doesn't currently meet the 30 feet, and we are proposing to maintain much of the existing parking lot, that waiver is requested. However, I know the planning staff's memo said that maybe that waiver isn't necessary because it's pre-existing, but I'm sure we may discuss that further. The other waiver we requested is related to the Chapter X bylaw and the Land Disturbance Permit Rules and Regulations. So our office's interpretation of the bylaw and its regulations is that for this project, because we are decreasing the impervious surface at the site and not altering the drainage characteristics of the site, that only a Type 1 permit is required, which only requires the submission of Erosion and Sedimentation Control Plan and a Disturbance Description. Naturally, we have provided the disturbance description. That's really every application we've submitted. We're talking about what we're trying to do here. So I feel that component is pretty straightforward, and the erosion control plan is provided on the last sheet of our site plan. I did submit a letter for the board's consideration late this afternoon. I assume that you have not had an opportunity to review that, as I really did submit at the 11th hour, but I wanted to make sure to get that in writing. And really, that letter's just summarizing our opinion on the, how the Chapter X bylaw and Land Disturbance Permit Rules and Regulations are implemented. So if I could read from a couple of excerpts from the rules and regulations for land disturbance permits. So we are subject to the bylaw. We exceed the thresholds. There's one threshold in particular. If you alter 5,000 square feet of impervious surface, you're subject to the bylaw. The project does call for the modification of some of the pavement. There will be repaving. So by default, we do exceed that 5,000 square foot threshold. In the regulations under Type 1, or in the regulations, it states that a Type 1 Erosion Control Only permit, that is the name provided in the regs, is required for regulated activities that exceed the thresholds but do not result in the permanent alteration of runoff or drainage characteristics of the site. Given that we are reducing impervious surface and further, we're not proposing any substantial tree clearing whatsoever, I believe the project actually results in one ornamental tree being cut. We will not be increasing runoff leaving the site. In fact, it'll most likely be even slightly reduced by the proposed reduction in impervious surface. So the opinion of our office is that only the Type 1 permit is required, which would not require us to meet that one-inch volume requirement in the regulations, which I will go into in further detail if the board would like me to. The other component here is that the board does have the right to essentially defer to another board to make their decision on stormwater. Conservation Commission has reviewed this project for compliance with the State Wellness Protection Act and its regulations, as well as the town's bylaw. There is work proposed within the 100-foot buffer zone of a wetland and the 200-foot riverfront area. The commission, after a couple of meetings, did vote to approve this project. We have incorporated infiltration trench into the design, so they have confirmed, in their opinion, not that I intend to speak for them, but I believe it's implicit in their approval, that the project as designed does protect the interests of the act and the town's bylaw. So given that the commission has approved this and that the board, the Select Board, has the right to defer to the Conservation Commission on that permit, I, I believe we have met the requirements there. Now, the other component here is that, you know, even aside from what I believe that we're only subject to a Type 1 permit where this one-inch volume is not required, there are objectives listed in the bylaw for what the purpose of the bylaw is, what it's trying to achieve. I believe the project as designed meets all of those objectives. The one that sticks out to me most, and I can provide this letter to you and go through line by line if you'd like, but the one that sticks out to me most is that one of the objectives is to mimic pre-existing hydrologic conditions. This property doesn't currently have any engineered stormwater controls. If we go in here and introduce a substantial stormwater control in order to comply with this regulation, it will certainly not mimic the pre-existing condition at the site. At this point, I, that's about as much as I have prepared, but I am open to any questions, and I'll give you that letter.
Alyssa?
Thanks. Thank you, Paul, for coming in. So I was the Select Board assigned to this project, and I've reviewed the letter and spoken with planning staff about this. And I just wanted to offer a couple of points, like clarifications that I reached out for, just in case it was confusing to any other board members. So as Paul mentioned, they have received the approval from the ZBA and the Conservation Commission and the Historical Commission for 358A, but it has not yet been reviewed for 358B, and that will likely happen in February. But again, as I mentioned, back in October, you know, we can, that's not going to hold up our approval. It's just a risk to the applicant. I did, though, ask about the, the stormwater requirements and GCG's recommendation to not grant that waiver. So I, I do see in this memo from Stamsky McNary that they're decreasing the impervious surface, and so there, there's going to be more recharge. There's no engineered stormwater there. There will be after this project is complete. But I note that GCG says that what they are suggesting is that it's a, it's an ideal location to improve the runoff quality, not just to provide stormwater infrastructure. And I think that we need to be really thoughtful and very careful when it comes to stormwater. The stormwater regulations are being updated, and they should be published early next year, I read in the Hazard Mitigation Plan Update. So a couple of things that I suggest the board consider is, first of all, to check in with engineering to find out if this implementing authority board can actually rely on Conservation Commission for the permit, because stormwater is really an engineering permit. And I very much respect the Conservation Commission members and their work, but they are dealing specifically with wetlands protection and not necessarily stormwater. I'm sure that they have a lot of experience and knowledge with it, serving on the commission and dealing with these project reviews. But I think checking in with engineering, and the memo came in after engineering staff had left. And then the second thing I'd like the board to consider is to check in with GCG to find out what specific measures they might have in mind for, because they don't spell that out. They just say, we suggest it's a suitable location with removal of that gravel. with removal of that gravel to improve runoff." But like, with what? With a constructed wetlands? What? So I think those two answers we might want to get. And planning staff is here also for more, for more questions and more, maybe clarification than I can provide.
I think that was a very thoughtful response, Alyssa, and I think that those two actions would be appropriate for the board to take at this time. But if anyone has any other questions regarding the application, happy to answer them.
Thank you. Any other questions? David, and then Jim.
Thank you. Putting aside any waivers or changes in impervious surface or whatever, can you describe, just briefly, what the stormwater plan is? I mean, I've looked through the, the materials, but I'd like to just to describe what the, the engineered plans for on the site.
So the current stormwater plan consists of an infiltration trench. So that is in addition, since the last time that the board heard this application, we have added an infiltration trench sort of on the left side of the, the parking lot as you look at the site. In order to accommodate that trench, we have proposed a removal of some additional impervious surface. Going along with the infiltration trench, we have the operation and maintenance plan provided with the packet that includes detail on how to maintain the trench and also specifications on frequent sweeping of the pavement.
And, and the, so then the parking lot is just, will, the runoff from the parking lot would just drain into that, the trench? The way it'll be slow to drain into the trench?
Correct, yeah. We are proposing minor modification to the grading of the, the parking lot, and that's really just to provide an accessible space. But the existing pattern, general slope direction, will remain the same, and we're putting the infiltration trench where water is naturally going, anyway.
Great, and just one final thing, just for clarification, and I'm pretty sure this is great. There's, there's no underground structures or anything for runoff, is that right?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
I think this is a question for planning staff, but you may have a comment about this, too. I didn't, I, I know that the DRB sent in comments, and I know that you had plans after that that were responsive to those comments. But I, I, I wasn't able to follow whether all of their comments were addressed, or most of them, or, you know, where, where, where that stood. And I was wondering, Kayla, if you'd done a, a look at that.
Paul, did, did you reach back out to the DRB with the plans? I can do that, just to ensure that those were incorporated.
Okay, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have a comment from Residen. Just state your name and where you live.
I'm Sarah Upamasev. And so I agree with Alyssa regarding the structure of the law, that the cons comm can only approve or disapprove changes or impacts to the wetlands and the buffers. And the select board under Stormwater X is the approving authority for stormwater impacts. And there may be other impacts besides just the runoff to the wetlands to consider other, other sites, the street. And I will, is this Stamski McNeary? Is this? Yes, so that's the same engineering firm that signed off on the Bumblebee Way. Just keep that in mind. Relative to sweeping, the evidence is that these places do not sweep. And so I hope that you start putting penalties into these permits, that if they do not maintain their culverts in its YZ, whatever infrastructure, that they will be automatically fined. So if any neighbor complains that they hadn't been maintained, they're automatically is fined, because what's happening now is that nobody's enforcing it. So you get years down the line, and there's years of culvert work. And, you know, we might be looking at a million-dollar infrastructure project with High Street relative to the runoff to, from Bumblebee Way and/or 40 High. The other thing is that substantial tree clearing impact to impervious, whatever it is, these are all just his opinions. As he submits, they're opinions of his office. But again, the same office that has approved other things that are causing us a lot of infrastructure issues relative to flooding. And I guess that's it. Thank you so much. Oh, relative to objectives in the bylaw, unless there are limits put into the permit, then they're just objectives that somebody says that they're going to try and meet. And I think that's the wrong way to go about resilience relative to flooding, given that the 100-year floods are no longer 100-year floods. They're 500-year floods happening every week. Thank you.
Thank you. Any residents' concerns online? No. So I'm not sure what we're voting for or if we're pushing the public hearing to Jim.
What I heard was a number of requests from the board members for further information, and that information would need to be received, you know, at, at an open hearing. So I, I, I think we are not yet ready to close the public hearing until we get answers from staff on some of these questions.
Right, and I know that, you know, these 358A, B, or is it A? It's B, it's B, is still needing to go before the HC, so. So are we all in favor of extending the public hearing? Yeah, that would be great.
I move to continue the public hearing until, do we need a date certain?
Second. Waiting for a particular date and time before we say yes to it.
While we're waiting, Paul, do you have anything to add?
Not so much to add, it's more of a question. So I just want to make sure it's clear what we're looking for from the engineering department and the GCG associates. I absolutely understand the board's concerns. I want to make sure we get this right. But what our office is asserting is that we are not subject to this 1-inch requirement and that there is not a basis for us to provide this. Perhaps the opinion of the engineering department and GCG is different, and something changes, but I just think we should be clear about what are we, are we looking to look at that? Or is it, I just don't want to be stuck in a cycle where it's, we're running around and I'm arguing with them about that. If we just have to come to an agreement on that specifically, and then we can proceed, I think that's going to be extremely important. Because it does, there does seem to be some disagreement between our office and GCG on, you know, how does the bylaw apply to this particular project? So I think that's the component we need to get straight before we're going to do anything.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, so what, what I'm looking for specifically for, from engineering is to weigh in on your office's assertion that this board, as the implementing authority, can take the cons coms notice of intent with order of conditions as the permit, basically. And I'm also wanting to hear from GCG a little bit more detail about what they're suggesting, because all I saw was improve the quality of the runoff. And just to, to note about the difference in opinion, you know, you can, you can argue with them. Nobody's going to stop you from arguing. But GCG is, is the town of Acton's third-party engineering, so we're going to defer to their assessment of, of the requirements for Chapter X. And I don't know if Kayla wants to add to that, or.
If the board would like, we could continue it to January 13th at 7:20?
Sounds good. Is that good?
Yeah, so I move to. I move to continue the hearing to January 13th at 7:15 PM.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Paul. Thanks.
Thank you.
Onto new special business. Number seven, appoint Kristen Kawe as interim town accountant.
Thank you, members of the board. The town accountant is a select board appointment, so we typically would do a recruitment and bring a candidate forward for your consideration. I'm very pleased tonight to be providing a recommendation for an interim town accountant as we continue to evaluate a permanent position. And Kristen Kawe, who's coming up to the podium right now, has worked for the town of Acton for several years. She's currently our assistant town accountant, and I'm recommending that the board appoint her as interim town accountant effective December 20th, 2024. And Kristen's here to introduce herself to the board.
Thank you, John. I'm Kristen Kawe, and like he said, I've been with the town for a long time. And I would like to thank you for your consideration for me to serve the town as interim town accountant. I am looking forward to the challenges that the position is going to give me. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Any comments from members? Sorry, Dean.
I, I would just acknowledge that when I was on staff, I worked with, with Kristen, and certainly I found that she was a, a very bright, intelligent, and collaborative person. And I would add my personal recommendation to her interim appointment.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion, David?
Thank you. I move that we appoint Kristen Kawe as interim town accountant.
Second.
Ooh, can I make a friendly amendment? Can we make that effective as of December 20th?
Yeah, I accept that friendly amendment.
Yes.
I also accept that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Kristen. Good luck.
Nice job.
Next, select board budget workshop and presentation of fiscal year 2026 through 2035 capital improvement plan.
We have a pretty good audience tonight. I was going to turn this podium sideways, rather than have my back to them, if that's all right. So I'm John Muntari, I'm the town manager, and I'm very pleased tonight to be presenting an update to the work we've been doing on the budget. This is our third budget presentation of the budget season, and this is a very important one, because we've now published the capital improvement plan. We published the capital plan on Friday. Hopefully, you had a chance to check it out. It's on the website, actonma.gov/tommanager. And so I just want to go through a little bit about the capital plan and give you an update on our level services estimates going forward. So let's jump right in. I already talked about where we are in the process. And then, so I like to frame every discussion of budgets with the select board goals. That's what, the directives you give us are the work, is the work that we do. It shapes how we present our budget. So we're not going to go through all these, because we've done it before, but I want to highlight number three. Goal number three is to bring a DPW project to town meeting in May of 2025. So if we go forward to another slide after this one, I just wanted to give an update on that goal. So the board established that goal for us to do this year, but the DPW facility project is something that we've been working on for several years. It actually precedes 2021, but May of 2021 was the first time we had a feasibility study presented to the select board. And so that started in May. Then the board established a DPW facility study committee to say, okay, it seems like we need to do this. But the board said, why don't you form a committee and figure out what it might look like? That committee met with public presentations and community engagement for eight or nine months, made a presentation to the board that October, which made specific recommendations for how to proceed with the project. One of the recommendations was that it seek, that we seek more funding to do design work. Later, in, in May of 2023, town meeting voters approved $1.225 million to design a new public works facility in the location of the current facility. And that's what we've been doing since, since that time. In July of 2023, the board actually formed a building committee, which is different than the study committee. This is a building of volunteers and some staff that are going to actually help steer the project through the building project, the network is going on right now. Also related is that in this past town meeting, May of '24, town meeting approved funding to construct a new fuel depot, which was, which was a critical thing that needed to happen for the DPW project to move forward, because the fuel depot is currently right in the middle of the site. And that brings us to our goal. And then I want to talk about where we are with the project. So we have completed schematic design, and we see this project as a debt exclusion project. This is not a project that we can fit within the existing levy, so moving forward, it would have to be a debt exclusion. The preliminary schematic design cost estimate was just under $4.7 million. We've done work since then to adjust that. But I wanted to just talk a little bit about the debt exclusion and the process and, and what it, what it means. So a project with the estimates that we're coming to look at would have an impact on single-family households in the range of $336. The average single, the average condo, $196. That's a, that's an amount of money that we need to acknowledge and understand. It's important that any decisions that we move forward with are going to have a financial impact to taxpayers. However, deferring, which, which is something that's being discussed or delaying this project, a project that we've acknowledged that needs to happen, deferring it, all it does is increase the cost. So for folks that are concerned about the cost to taxpayers, which we all are, but for those saying that we shouldn't move forward, I just wanted to show a little bit of information about what that looks like. So if we waited five years, the impact is actually going to increase by 27%. So a 43, a $43 million project this year is going to cost $54 million in 2030. It's just math. Our cost escalation, it goes up by varying amounts, but a good number to work with is 5%. And if you look at that over five years, it's a substantial increase in the project. I just mapped that out for you, not maybe, not to go through now, but we'll, we'll publish this online. It just shows the average impact to a single-family tax bill, where we said it's going to be 336 right now. If we wait five years to 2030, it'll be 429. So that's real, that's a, that's a consideration that I just wanted to make sure was in front of you all. So the building committee, which is led by Dean, has been doing a lot of work to be responsive to concerns about the cost of the project. They had a very productive meeting last week on the 12th, where they discussed some value engineering ideas to bring the project costs down. One of the biggest ones was the finance committee. The finance committee's been very engaged in this project just from the beginning. And all along, they were saying, why are we doing this in phases? It's going to be more expensive. And we said, that's, that's a good idea. We're going to look at that. And, and so we did. We took the suggestion from the finance committee to eliminate the phasing of the project, and that did actually reduce the cost, reduce the schedule. We also identified some site work that we could have our own staff do. And we figured out there's some items that we can actually move below the line and make them add alternates, which ultimately gives us flexibility to not have to buy them if we don't need them. They're not, they're not mission critical. You can have a building without these things, like equipment. Those things, those three things that they did last week reduced the project, the project cost by 3.9 million, so far. I say so far because they talked about more than that that night, but that's the amount that I wanted to just bring forwards for, for us to think about. The meeting is available online if you want to check it out. There's a link there that you'll be able to click on when it's published. And so, again, we, we went from 47 million to 43 million. That's a debt service in, in the, we have to pay for that in, in over 30 years of 2.58 million. Some of the things that we haven't included in this financial calculation is that the town, through strong financial planning, has set aside funding in a capital stabilization account. It's been used very, very sparingly over the last five or six years. I think it's been, we've been saving it for something like this. And so when we, if you were to reduce the project cost by 1.5 million from stabilization, that would save us $90,000 a annual debt service. We're projecting conservatively a 4.25 million. We're projecting conservatively a 4.25% interest rate. I'm not comfortable changing that, but I just wanted to note that there's a potential we would get a better one. There's also significant savings that we're anticipating from some of the energy components of this, which I think are worth noting. So that's a project. That's the big project. And that's the one I wanted to lead with because it's the one that I think people need to understand. And I wanted to keep the conversation going. But the capital improvement plan itself includes 30 projects that we are considering for FY '26. Overall, it's $111 million worth of investments over a 10-year period. If you go to the plan, you, there's information throughout there. Page four, we've also highlighted grants. One thing that allows us to be able to do capital projects with the limited resources we have is we get a ton of grants. Our team, our, the departments, the department heads, the staff, we chase grants every chance we get. And there's, on page four, you'll see a list of the 16 grants that we just received in the last six months. And it's $1.5 million, so that really helps. So this is also in the plan. There were $13.6 million worth of projects requested that we would borrow for. They're listed here. Some of the big ones are the Town Hall HVAC. You'll see we have windows open in this building right now in December. And that's a symptom of an old HVAC system that needs major rehabilitation because of our environmental goals. We would electrify this building while we're repairing the HVAC. That's an expensive project, but it's one that has to happen. Again, this building has been here for 100 and something years, and it's going to be here. We're not getting rid of the building, so we're going to need to upgrade the HVAC eventually. If we wait to do it, that'll get more expensive, too. So it's sort of like, we need to always look at projects like this and try to figure out how to fit it into the picture. Other ones that we've been talking a lot about are complete streets projects, like the Hayward and Main intersection. That's a project that we're estimating at $1.9 million. That would include some major redesign of that intersection and a traffic light. Complete streets and sidewalks throughout town are always needed, and they're always requested. Fire engine, the parking lot behind here, the radio project. In this slide, I'm suggesting potential things that we could defer. And the only reason I'm suggesting complete streets projects that we could defer is that we've been very successful in getting state partnerships to fund things like this. And if we had to make hard choices, I think those are ones that we have opportunities to get funded otherwise, where some of the other things, we wouldn't be able to get any support necessarily from other agencies. Free cash projects, these are projects that we pay for directly out of free cash. They're usually smaller, not borrowing projects. And this is a list of projects that we typically see. Police cruisers, building improvements. A few that I wanted to highlight, an electric message board. You've noticed that we use the highway department's temporary message boards, but they're out there year-round, and they're a very effective way to communicate with the public. There's one in particular that's been on the intersection of 27 and Great Road for a long time. And we think that that'd be a good spot to have a permanent sign. We'd work with the DRB and whomever else we need to work with to move a project like that forward, but we think it's a good idea to do so. Our fire department's turnout gear contains PFAS. It's the industry standard, or it was the industry standard. And industry standards are changing, and we need to replace all of that gear. It's not even really that available right now, so I'm not recommending that we try to do it all at once. But we want to start doing that as soon as possible, so I'm recommending that as well. Another notable one is the clicker replacement program. The clickers that we've had for a while are effective, but there are newer versions available that are smaller, easier to deal with without batteries like that. And they have some security features that we think are better. And they may also help with the select board's goals related to expanding the way we allow people to attend town meeting. Finally, transfer station subsidy. That's something that the town meeting voters asked us to look at through a citizen petition. So we've included that with the childcare subsidy program, which has been very successful, funded through several other programs in the past. We're proposing to put it in the capital plan this year. This slide is a special revenue. And it's special because it's stuff that doesn't happen on a regular basis or it's sources of revenue that are dedicated for very specific purposes. And the first I wanted to cover is sale proceeds. Under Mass General Law, when you sell property, you can only use the proceeds for things that are investments that are similar in duration that you could borrow for. And we're selling, later in this meeting if the board approves it, the Main Street property that, where Kennedy Landscaping is, we're selling that to Housing Authority for $1 million for them to build McManus Manor. And those sale proceeds would have to be used for something of a large capital nature. So three high priority projects I've identified that we could use that funding for are upgrading the locker rooms in the public safety facility to add more female lockers. There aren't enough for the workforce that we have, and that's a major need that we have to address. And the sprinkler system needs to be replaced at the same time because it's in the same area of the building. So that's why it's so expensive. I was hoping it wouldn't be as expensive, but it is. The other one is the public library next door, the Acton Memorial Library. Those bathrooms were, I believe, installed when the addition, or the big renovation happened. And they're heavily, heavily used. That's our most heavily used building in town. And the bathrooms are right there on the first floor, and so they need to be replaced. We want to make them more accessible as well. And then we also need to make some customer service improvements to this building. The finance wing, which is a very frequently-used portion of this building, where the town clerk's office is. We want to make it easier for people to access that and safer for staff. And then we also want to design some improvements to other projects that are on the 10-year capital plan. Those are all things to spend the million dollars from. Those are the first three items. Other items are the stormwater revolving fund, using that for a study, using the transfer station enterprise to purchase a new front-end loader. And then the energy efficiency fund. We're proposing to use that to help fund a portion of the Town Hall HVAC electrification project. That's a way to use energy efficiency funds that we generate from solar pilots and other energy-related revenues. Use that directly to reinvest in energy efficiency projects like the electrification program. So that's capital. So I just wanted to bring you up to speed where we are with the budget process. We're planning to present the budget the first week of January. But I wanted to tell you where we are exactly today. We've increased capital by $12,000 with what was just presented. We've reduced the departmental operating budgets by $439,000. That includes reductions in supplies and services accounts. It also includes reducing the staffing requests from 464 to 312. And so the next page will show those staffing changes. So again, we're still evaluating. This is my recommendation, but this is where we're at right now in the budget process. We're thinking that we could, we should fund a police lieutenant, two firefighter positions rather than eight because we just can't take on that amount of investment right now. We think that we can do the help desk technician part-time and still provide an important value add to the organization. And same thing with the benefits administrator. The other positions, we believe we can achieve through reorganizing other programs. I wanted to make a special note of the fire prevention officer. We have set up a town meeting, through town meeting, a fund to collect permitting revenues and use to fund that position. It needs time to build up its funding. And so we're proposing to use the building department revolving fund right now because those, the building department and the fire department work very closely together on these inspections. And it's an appropriate way to use that resource to help with our permitting operations. So that makes the level services changes documented here. Last year's approved budget is the first column. The second column with numbers in it is what I presented in November as our level services estimate. And then the third column is where we're at today with the changes that I just discussed. And so in all, you know, we're looking for the board's feedback on this spending plan. And to give you some additional context to some of the data you may want to consider, I have included on the next slide information about ALG. So we're meeting again Wednesday morning with the ALG. And the numbers from this spending package that I just presented would actually result in a deficit in the ALG plan of $118,000. And just to, so that's including, what that includes is a town expense estimate of 4.65% increase in total spending. And so, and that's with the revenues as described. We're keeping 1.34 and on tax levy. We're using just under 1.7 in free cash. Those are levers that sometimes ALG looks at when making decisions. So I just wanted to see if you had any feedback on that. Just reframing where we're headed next. After feedback from you all tonight, we'll be presenting the budget right here from this podium on January 13th. And then we'll have the joint workshops with the finance committee members in this room as well on the 15th and 21st. And hopefully, we're, we have a budget that we can deliver in March, and we'll be on our way to town meeting. Happy to take questions or comments, or if you want me to sit down and do it from there, I can do that, too.
However you're comfortable. Do members have questions? Thank you, John, for putting this together. Here we go again. Dean, do you have?
Certainly, I'll want to hear more about the electronic message board, but that particular item is not something that, at least at this point, I'd be really on board with. And I'd be interested to hear what my other colleagues might feel about that, either now or later. And I'd also want to hear some more and be prepared to discuss the childcare and transfer station subsidy. I'll want to hear some more about that. But at least on the first pass, those are the things that I would want to focus on. Thank you.
Any other questions? David?
Thank you, John. So I have a number of questions and comments. I don't see any monies for complete streets sidewalks, and those are not easily obtained from grants unless you know of a particular source for this year. And so I'm curious about that. I mean, I understand that, you know, the Town Hall parking lot has been on the list for a long time, and I'm in favor of doing that. But I'd like to see some spending on sidewalks. Do you want to comment now, or should I go?
So just to comment on that, yes, I fully acknowledge that. I just wanted to mention that we have substantial work underway in partnership with the state to make some improvements to Great Road. We have a big grant for Powdermilk Road, where we're working on complete streets projects that, so all that stuff is happening now. But there is opportunities for funding for complete streets money. I think the state just wants to see us finish those first, which we'll hopefully do this year. Then we can get back in the queue for more grant funding for projects like that.
Okay, thank you. The childcare subsidy, I'm in favor of, and I understand that we've had other funding in past years and that, so from the point of view of this budget, it's a one-time expense. However, going forward, if we want to do this, it should really, in my view, be in the operating budget. So, you know, if we do it one more year, it shouldn't be a one-time expense anymore. So again, I don't object to it this year, but if it was here next year, I probably would object. The, I assume that the bathrooms in the library, they're going to be made physically larger? Is that right? The back wall will be pushed out or something?
We don't have a specific design yet, but we just know that it needs to happen.
Okay, yeah, I think it'd be hard to make them accessible in the existing square footage. So I just wonder about that. And finally, I was wondering if, on the last page, or second to last page, the total capital at minus 0.78%, I'm wondering how that's calculated? I just don't see that in the, and you don't have to answer it for me right here, but if someone could get back to me and tell me how that's calculated and if that number is actually correct. So anyway, again, you don't have to do that right now because I'm not expecting you to whip out your calculator and figure it out on the fly. But if you were someone in the finance-
It's calculated incorrectly. That's how it's, that's incorrect.
If someone in the finance department could get back to me on that, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Alyssa?
Thanks.
Were you finished? Yeah, sorry. No, no. I just wanted to check.
So I am happy to see the borrowing requests and also the recommendations that you've made for deferring some of the projects because I think that that is really responsive. Those decisions are really responsive to our goals and also discussions that have happened recently and direction that we've provided. And I'm glad that you mentioned that some of the deferrals, you know, it makes sense to wait and see if we can get grant funding for that or engage in partnership to help move those projects along. Also, I think waiting on the Maple Street site improvements makes sense until we see what the food pantry improvements look like. It just might be easier to move that project forward. I'm so happy to see the $4 million in reduction in the DPW facility from the value engineering. So I just want to give a shout out to that committee for working so hard on that. The electronic message board, I'm, I think it's something that would be nice to have, but talking about adding things to the budget that are nice to have doesn't seem to mesh well with our cost-cutting conversations and differentiating between essential services and wants and needs. And I want to just clarify that when I say that, I think that it's important to remember that some people might feel that there are certain things that are a wish or a want, but actually, for other people, they're real needs. But this is definitely not in that category. And a couple of things that are not sitting well with me are the stormwater utility study because that seems to be, I understand the reason for the request, but it seems to be getting ahead of our determination of public opinion and the work that RAC has just started. And when you were describing, John, the timeline of the DPW facility, I saw that the feasibility study came ahead of the study committee work. So that seems to be a similar, like, we want to flip those around and get the public engagement done first before we get into like the nitty-gritty details that a feasibility study would have. I think the feasibility of stormwater management generally, but there's more than one option. So I don't want to zero in on the utility so soon. And then the other one was the firefighter staff. So we mentioned that the last presentation, a couple of us, that we wanted to see sort of the results of the exploration of fire department operations, which we can do now with that grant. I do recall at town meeting when the fire station in North Acton was approved, there was a question from a town meeting member about, okay, you're getting this big new fire station, now we're going to have a fourth station. Does that mean we need to hire more staff? And the chief at the time said, no, there are no more plans for that. So, you know, if something else happened, either, you know, the population increased and it's better to have additional staff to meet the needs of the town or certain buildings have been built. And I just, I would want to see a justification for additional firefighting staff. Because I know that Chief Arnim has been looking for a fire prevention officer for quite some time. quite some time, and that seems to be in alignment with the town's needs, more so than additional firefighters, paramedics, although I don't know, because I haven't seen the data for that. So I'd just love to see the data. And I think that's it. Thank you for this. I love having this detailed of a process. I'm glad that you've decided to replicate the process that we went through last year with the operational override.
Jim?
Thanks. I really appreciate the work that's gone into this plan and I think almost all of the individual decisions that you've made here, that you're proposing here. I think they're sensible. I think they reflect the Select Board's goals. And I think they, you know, you've made some difficult and important cuts from the last time you've presented to us. And, you know, that's the hard work that you and your staff get to do, but I really appreciate seeing it laid out. Some particular comments. In terms of the sidewalks and the complete streets work, I've been advocating for a while with you, but I think I should say it more publicly, that I think we have the balance wrong between maintaining our streets for cars and maintaining our streets for pedestrians, bicyclists, you know, people using wheelchairs and so on. And where that, to me, where that gets reflected most importantly is in the money we get from the state, the Chapter 90 money, which is totally eligible for building sidewalks. And it's, to do that, it would require, we have our street maintenance work driven by a good study of the condition of all the roads and which ones need to be done next. I would be fine with drawing the line, you know, differently in that list of, you know, what streets need to be, get done when. I think if our streets for cars become a little bit more cracked, it's going to be inconvenient for a few car owners. But not building sidewalks is, I think, fundamental to health and safety. So I, that's the shift I'd like to see. And I think I haven't said that out loud enough. So I just wanted to say that again. Some comments on particular things that my fellow Select Board members said. In terms of the electronic message board, I can see that we might need to defer it, but it seems to me that with the current message board facility we have, limited to, you know, certain number of lines and characters, that we are, in our need to communicate to the public very important things, which is what ends up on those boards, we are often left with, you know, cryptic clues instead of actual messages. Things have to be abbreviated, shortened. Most URLs can't fit on a single line. It's, it's, it's as if we limited ourselves to, you know, emails that were 40 characters long. It's just, it's not, it doesn't help us to convey the vital information we need to convey to the public. A modern electronic message board would have much better resolution, would be able to support, you know, much, much more compelling readable messages. So I see the need for it. Is there anything else here that I wanted to comment on? I agree with David about childcare subsidies, both that they're very important and that they do eventually belong in an operating budget. Oh, the last one. Maybe it's time to stop doing fireworks. They're expensive, they freak out all the dogs, they're, you know, it's, it's, it's setting a bunch of stuff on fire for, you know, because people have old associations about that being a really positive thing. I don't, my heart's not in that anymore. We skipped them for a couple of years. The town didn't fall apart. Nobody died. I think we could continue to not have them. I do think we need something, of course, incredibly special for this upcoming anniversary. But after that, maybe it's time to let it go.
John?
Thank you for bringing up funding for complete streets projects. The work that the Transportation Advisory Committee is doing right now with Director Cora York for prioritization, that's a very important step that we need to make for this, to be eligible for the state's complete streets grant funding program, which we were seven, eight, nine years ago. And for one reason or another, we haven't been since. So once we complete that, I do see a really strong likelihood that we'd be in the mix for some funding, and it's pretty substantial as early as next year. So that's good news on the funding front for complete streets projects.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say I support the special revenues, the PSF building improvements, the locker room and sprinklers. And especially the little redesign in the finance department, they need that. And also, I agree with David and Jim with the childcare subsidy, and I think that should be eventually a line item. And Jim, I normally would be on your side with the fireworks. However, it was such a great celebration this past fourth. I, it was, it was such a great event. So I'm now on the other side. So I look forward to seeing this morph into, you know, our budget. Alyssa?
Thanks. I just wanted to add strong support for the two library projects. As a liaison to the, to the two trustee boards, the carpeting and the bathrooms on the first floor are in dire need of replacement.
I agree, yeah.
And I also didn't mention, John, I really appreciate that you've called out, you know, before you went into the details of the proposal, the cost per household for the DPW facility. I think that's really helpful, and I appreciate that you noted the importance of doing that. I also, oh, and the increase that would come from delaying that project. I also want to remind us that during the override process last year, when we saw the histogram of home values, we noted that 70% of the homes are under median value. So it's not really the number in the middle, although it is. So that $336, which is less than a dollar a day, is actually, you know, going to be even less for most of the, of the homes in Acton, or at least half of them. I think I just adopted Ann Chang's way of saying "half."
David?
Thank you. I just have a question on the Town Hall parking lot and 17 Woodbury. Is there a natural order to those two projects? In other words, does 17 Woodbury really need to come first before we do the parking lot?
Yeah, it really does need to come first, but it is, it will be first. We're doing it, we're starting it next month. So if, if this request makes it to town meeting, that project would be completed before we start thinking about the parking lot project.
And I just have a comment. You know, I attended the Green Communities Summit just a few weeks ago, and in chatting with various members there, for smaller buildings, like, I think we're already doing this for the Red House, so this is something we already do, but it also could be done probably for the Audubon Hill House and for Citizens Libraries. Smaller buildings can easily be electrified with commodity equipment and don't need specialty designs. You know, contrasted with this building, which obviously needs a special design because of its age and size. But I just wanted to point that out, that, and there's a huge difference in cost, and it's just enormous, more than two to one, to be able to use, and there, I guess there's some vendors now that do the prevailing wage thing to install regular, you know, normal heat pumps that houses and businesses use. So I just, I just wanted to mention that as a, something to note for cost.
I had a question that maybe my fellow board members can answer, or Mr. Manjariati. I just realized, I'm on, it's been, it's been long enough that I have lost track of exactly how capital overrides work. And this is my specific question. I know that we've talked about how the borrowing for the DPW building won't actually take place right away. There'll be some, you know, some smaller borrowings to get us started, but the big impact comes a few years down the road. Does that mean that, that the, the impact to that tax bill also is delayed? That a capital override basically allows us to borrow, to have that money in our budget to cover borrowing costs, but it doesn't have to be there until it's actually needed? Because that's different than the operating override, where we're just, you know, here, your taxes are larger now.
Yeah, so the debt exclusion vote that would be brought forward to people to vote on the ballot would authorize the town to collect revenue to pay off the debt for the project. And so we wouldn't need to do that until the debt was incurred, so that if, it wouldn't happen right away, but once we do the first bond issuance to borrow the money, then we'd start collecting the revenue to pay it off. So I think we're projecting that if it were to be approved this year, that the payments wouldn't start until FY '27. That, we could do, it could happen sooner, but that's what we think would happen based on the current understanding of the markets, so.
Okay, and a follow-up. So that number that you came up with, the, you know, dollar a day, is that sort of the average or the, assuming a level, a level borrowing? Or what, what sort of assumptions go into that number?
Right. So CJ Carroll, our principal assessor, is a wizard with spreadsheets, and he put together something very similar to the work that we did last year for the override, that produced a histogram. We used the same type of analysis to come up with an impact to single-family tax bill. And it's based on the debt service. So we said that it was going to cost 2.584 million. And that spread out amongst the tax base would be, you know, after several different things, but about $336 to the average single family. It's not a perfect, it's not a perfect calculation, because valuations fluctuate, and this, this, would be considering that they remain static, which we know they won't, but it's the best that we can do, and it's just a useful tool. Even, for example, the override calculations that we did last year actually were, they came in, the net, the end result was that the impact was a little bit less than we had projected. But we prefer to do it that way than have it be the other way.
Alyssa?
We had also talked about ramping up in maybe over a three-year period of the borrowing. Does this factor that in? This is the max?
This does not, this does not factor in a ramping up.
Okay.
If it were to be ramped up, you would just consider that probably the first year would be half of that. But, you know, that's a, that's strategy that we haven't finalized yet.
David?
Just two notes. With the, eliminating the phased construction, that reduces the, or increases the slope, right? So that slope would come faster. But the good thing is the top of the slope is less, right? And if we don't need to use all the contingencies, the total number is less, and therefore the impact on the tax bill is less, you know, so if we have 15% contingencies, I'm not saying what they are, right? But if we use 8% of them, then, then the total would be 7% less than, than that, right? So, and therefore the tax impact is proportionally less.
So this is sort of the, the draft thinking for the budget that we'll be presenting. There isn't going to be another meeting, most likely, before we finalize the budget, or maybe there is. But it'll be pretty late in the process. So if there's anything, I did get some feedback on some things that were concerns for you all. One thing that I was just checking on is the use of stabilization to offset the project. Is that something that you want us to run with, or no?
David?
I think that's a very good idea. And in the Finance Committee presentation of the capital plan, we should get there and put on that as well.
Thank you, John. Next up is our presentation and recommendation from Citizens Library Governance Committee.
I'm coming around here, because I think it's a good place to be for this. Before I get started, I just want to remind everyone who is on the Governance Advisory Committee, a few of them are here in the room, there could be some more folks online at home. Our committee members are myself, as the representative from the Select Board, three folks from the Memorial Library Trustee Group, all three of the Citizens Library Trustees, a representative from the Friends of Acton Libraries, our library director, and our town manager. So for the public, this is a presentation of the Citizens Library Governance Advisory Committee's report and recommendation. I will note that there are three folks here. Pat Clifford is our Friends representative. Miriam Lezak is on the Citizens Board and, sorry, Memorial Board, and Linda Vera is on the Citizens Board. Sorry, ladies. So I thought a good place to start after presenting the committee members is a review of our charge. And the committee was formed by the Select Board earlier this year in January, and we were charged with, quote, "helping to resolve certain structural issues in the way the Citizens Library Trustees govern within the Acton Library system. The goal is to enhance the library patron and staff experience and maintain a close and collaborative relationship between the two libraries." So I reported to you previously that the Advisory Committee recommended the two library Boards of Trustees meet jointly over the summer. The Boards were already working closely together to some degree. There was a liaison from the Memorial Library Trustee Board, attending meetings of the Citizens Library Trustee Board for a number of years. A Citizens Library Trustee was serving on the Policy Review Subcommittee since last fall, that's continuing. And a Citizens Library Trustee served on the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee also since last fall until the, the strategic plan for the Acton Libraries was completed and accepted by the Mass Board of Library Commissioners in June this year. So many positives resulted from that arrangement, and those are detailed in the report, so I won't outline them here. But both Boards agreed to continue meeting jointly for the time being while the committee continues its work to advance the solution. And we bring that to you today. Our recommendation is to unite the two Boards into a single Board of 12 Trustees to oversee the two libraries, which comprise the Acton Library system, bringing any necessary update to the town bylaws to, at the 2025 annual town meeting, and any necessary amendment to the Memorial Library Trustee governance documents. So I just want to highlight a couple of items in the report, although I trust you've read every single word. One is that the Mass Board of Library Commissioners advocates for municipalities with more than one library to have those libraries all overseen by a single Board of Trustees. So staff at MBLC have recommended a full integration of the two Boards. So staff at MBLC have recommended a full integration of the two boards, and that's the same recommendation that the Advisory Committee reached consensus on. Another point I wanted to highlight is that it's critical to acknowledge that there are a few patrons and others who are concerned about changes that might result from a change in the governance of the Citizens Library. And the Advisory Committee believes that the most noticeable changes that might come about in the future, given that the operations are now closely tied together, would likely be physical in nature. So changes to the building should efforts to comply with ADA requirements be advanced. And I want to say that that is a high priority for both boards, accessibility of the Citizens Library as well as staff. I personally think that a single larger board is possibly the best chance for, for success in that area. Even as those changes, should they take place, the Citizens Library, in the words of one of our committee members, will continue to be a lovely, and I, and I personally would add beloved, little reading library. So that will continue. Lastly, I wanted to draw your attention to the two appendices at the end of the report. So these were requested by some committee members during our last meeting, while we were reviewing a draft of the report. So I crafted those after the meeting and they have not been discussed by the committee. Appendix A is a timeline, which is primarily for the public who might have questions about why we're still discussing this issue, but I thought it was a good review for board members as well. I included a detailed history going back to 1951 from the town manager's slide deck, and that was provided in his update to this board in July of 2022. So there's lots of newspaper clippings, annual reports, town meeting warrants, and budget documents in that slide deck. Appendix B is a description of the various groups that are mentioned when we discuss library operations and governance. And some committee members felt that the public was getting confused by the names of these groups and literature that was being distributed at the public forum we held last month, and I, it appears has been distributed tonight at this meeting. So the Friends of the Acton Libraries and the Memorial Library Foundation are both 501(c)(3)'s with governing documents and boards of directors. Their names are all listed on their websites. The Friends even has photos of their members. Both of those organizations work to support the libraries with donations of time and funding. There is another Friends group, the Friends of Citizens Library. It's not a traditional Friends group that directly supports the work of the library. Instead, it seems to be an advocacy group focused on communicating a message to the public and to officials and staff about specifically maintaining the independence of the Citizens Library and the Citizens Library Board of Trustees. I've looked at this group's website, which was constructed in the run-up to last year's annual town meeting, and it has a solutions page. And I wanted to note that several solutions are proposed that I believe are in alignment with the committee's recommendation that we are bringing to you today. One of them is for, quote, "equity among the different boards of trustees," end quote. Another is to agree to not dwell on the past and hurt feelings, but to look forward, oh, quote, "look forward, presume good intentions, and embrace collaborative solutions." A third is partnership, quote, "to figure out how to share power," end quote. So these statements reflect the work of the Advisory Committee and will come to fruition if the committee's recommendation is accepted by this board. So in conclusion, the course of action that the Select Board decides upon will require the input of Town Council. Town Council will need to outline the steps necessary to implement whatever course of action is decided by this board. So we hope to hear tonight from board members specific questions that you want answered by the committee or by Town Council and any specific preferences that you have.
Thank you, Alyssa. Thank you for your, your, all your work on this Governance Committee. I think it, it makes me happy to, I, I feel like combining the two boards is awesome. I think that's what should be done and it should operate under, you know, AML. That's really all I have to say for right now. Jim?
I just wanted to add my thanks again to, to the members of the committee and, you know, the, the, the summer miracle of having the boards meet together was, was fundamental to being able to create and agree on this unanimous recommendation. So I just want to appreciate everyone for, you know, being willing to go through that process of having combined board meetings and the CLGA C meetings, and I think it just created a, a critical mass of, of connection and communication that allowed this to come forward. I think in terms of approving a direction, I'm very comfortable with the direction that's approved here. I, I, I wanted to footnote, Alyssa, your, the, the highlight in the report, the, the comment from Town Council, which I think also speaks to some of my concerns about the, the, the future relationship between the, the structural relationship between the library trustees. So I, I am just going to read that out loud. "It's Town Council's suggestion to maintain a distinction to whatever degree possible between the two trustee groups integrated into one board, i.e., continue to elect slash appoint trustees as they are currently, and continue to have authority over certain functions unique to each respective library, such as approval of gift, trust, and endowment fund expenditures, and approval of policies that are applicable to only one library." And so, given that, I'm especially happy that, you know, you're, you're clear that the next step is to, you know, work with Town Council on figuring out how to make all this real. And so, yeah, let's, let's, let's go ahead and start working with Town Council on making this real. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Jim. I just wanted to point out that in some discussions, there's been a question around that specific advice, so I just want to emphasize that that was her recommendation, but there are members of the committee who have different ideas. I'll just note one. So perhaps both trustee boards could be elected at the ballot and they're just listed as Memorial Library Trustee, Citizens Trustee, just to have more equity in, in election because there are more people, hopefully, that come to the polls than, than might come to town meetings. So that's, I just want to highlight that those are recommendations and, and this board could choose to follow or go in a different direction.
David?
So thank you very much for this, this report. I know I've had strong feelings on this in the past and, and I, I appreciate all the work that's gone into the report. It's actually really good. I just wanted to confirm a, a few things. So essentially, the general direction advocated by this report is the way that the library's been operating for the last few months. Isn't that correct?
I would say, you mean the boards or the libraries themselves?
Well, kind of both, I guess, right?
Yeah, so I would say for the last, well, since June, the boards have been meeting together, so that would be a few months, but the two libraries have been operating as a single system with staff working at both libraries, with training and scheduling and book processing and ordering. That has been going on for a couple of years since the Select Board directed staff to operate Citizens as a branch until things were sorted out.
Until we changed, yes. And, and my impression is that seems to be going well. I mean, I, I haven't heard anything to the, the contrary there, so that is, is good. And all three Citizens Library Trustees were members of this committee, is that correct? And since this is unanimous, obviously all of them agreed with the outcome as, as, as listed in this document. I have two very, one kind of question, I don't know if you have a copy of the report in front of you, but in the, the financial, legal, and other considerations, point four says, "prior to the formation of the GL, GAC, the CL, library manager works some hours at AML, and this is expected to continue to be a full-time position, will function in the same way as Citizens, is fewer, is open fewer than 30 hours a week." I'm, could you explain what that is intended to say? I think there must be some background there that I'm not aware of.
Or it could have just been my poor sentence structure. So the library manager at Citizens, Kristen McLeod, that was a full-time position, but the Citizens Library is not open full 40 hours. So she was spending time at Memorial Library.
And, and so this is just a note that that's the way that is currently?
That's the way, yeah, well, right, currently there isn't a manager. Currently there are librarians who, there are about 12, I think, the director said, are trained to work at Citizens, 12 Memorial Library staff, but there is no manager. So the replacement of that position was put on hold until the conclusion of the committee's work. Did I answer the question?
I think so. So you, that, how that, if I say it back in my own words, how that arrangement works going forward is something to decide in the future, how many hours that library is open, et cetera.
Yes. Yeah, so the, the library did increase its hours and, actually, when we were doing, at our very first meeting, when committee members were sharing their visioning for, for the, the library, one committee member, actually Memorial Library Trustee, said that he would love to see both libraries open the same number of hours. So that would be an increase to Citizens' hours. I don't know if that's possible, but that is certainly something that, you know, this, this process is not deciding. I think that that needs to be left up to staff, whether or not those hours can increase, whether or not there needs to be a branch manager or a Citizens Library manager, or if it could continue the way it's been working since the library manager resigned after town meeting last year.
Thank you. I also just wanted to make one note and then ask, ask, you know, a, a question. So the, the issue of making the building ADA requirement is actually, of, of course, it's going to be a collaborative thing, but it's actually primarily a question for the town, not, not the either library, right? It's a, the, kind of the externals of the building, it's, it's a, it's a town asset and how we proceed to make that ADA compliant and things like that is, you know, something that we'll face like in the capital improvement plan, just like we discussed for other things today. I just wanted to make sure that that was clear for everyone. And finally, I'm interested in the details of the plan moving forward, and I think probably all the members of the board are. How is that, what is the plan to get there? Are, are, is someone going to make a draft, detailed plan or, you know, are, are, is this board going to have discussions? Are the, is the, this committee going to make further proposals? What's the, what's the steps from here on?
We need to get Town Council to weigh in on what steps need to take place in order to implement the action plan.
But there, there might be different alternatives, right? And some of those alternatives, I, I bet you matter to members of this committee, matter to both sets of trustees and also matter to this board. So I think that's worth thinking about, right? Is to, I don't think it's a showstopper here by any, any means. I think this is really a good step forward, but I think the details are going to matter to everybody. And there might want to be substeps as we get to the conclusion for, you know, double check with everybody, you know? You know, after talking with council, this is, seems like a reasonable plan, what does everybody think? Because you already said that some of the trustees had certain objections to that Town Council statement or cer- certain differences. You know, we might have differences, including you, right? So anyway, I just, we, we should have some kind of thought and sequence into, into doing that. And again, thank you very much for.
Sure. Yeah, that makes, that makes a lot of sense. I, I'm pretty sure I understand what you're, what you're getting at. What would be helpful for the committee moving forward would be if the Select Board has any specific questions that they want to pose to Town Council. There, there were some of them that were listed in the report that came out of, you know, the public forum. So if there's, if there's any questions that you have because something's not clear, because, because the, another goal of the committee's work was to, you know, not only center the patron experience and have the highest quality patron services that we can provide and protect and maintain a high-quality working environment for staff, but also to make sure that the, the path forward is not legally problematic.
So I don't know if the rest of the board agrees at all. I, I would like to see this committee or the joint trustees come up with a further plan, right? I, I mean, I could say what I think, but I think my opinion shouldn't go first here. I, you know, I'd rather see, but I'd, I like to see some interim steps, just like we get for a lot of big projects, right? That, you know, where you come back or the, you know, representatives of the trustees come back or representatives of the committee come back and, and say, you know, this is the direction we're headed, is there any concerns by the board for that, right? And depending on how far we, you know, go, that might happen just once or a couple times. And then finally, we can get to town meeting and, and let town meeting decide. Thank you.
Dean?
Yeah, I, I'd like to second what my colleagues have said. Thank you very much. This is a tough project and it was, is very contentious in the past and, and you folks seem to pull it off. The important thing for me is I think that you've provided a path forward so that, you know, the West Acton Library can maintain its viability as a, as a library. And, you know, that, depending upon how things went, that was not a foregone conclusion at the start of this. So I think you've done a great job and I look forward to seeing the West Acton Library continue for another 140 years or so. Thank you.
There.
Don't want to be so bold as to have it crooked.
Yes.
First of all, I can't speak for the Friends of Citizens Library.
Just state your name.
Oh, Tara, again, from, yeah. But relative to the goals, I, I believe it's to keep and respect state law around the matter. I, I do want to object a little bit because I think that when the group was talking about equity and cooperation and things like that, that, that we aren't there. That when you talk about pulling it off, effectively you've gotten rid of people who served in the library, the Citizens Library for decades. Volunteers were fired, people resigned, they're scared to even come forward and speak because of this, the treatment. I was surprised that the Select Board hasn't actually gotten the Town Council to respond to the legal memo that Friends of Citizens Library carefully crafted. It's still valid, a little bit of it was about Article 11, but, you know, 95% of it is still unanswered. The, relative to the joint meetings and the cooperation that I've been seeing of people that are coming to the meetings, I, I, I like that the, the joint board respects Citizens' Library Trustees' votes as separate because they're responsible under state law, they have a duty to the voters to make decisions relative to the operation of the library. So I urge, if you're going to propose a bylaw, that the bylaw focus not on what the trustees can't do because it's legally problematic. In fact, I think it should not even focus on Citizens' Library because it's legally problematic, to focus on what the town staff is willing to do or what the voters want town staff to do for libraries. So it's not arbitrary and capricious, it's not about one library trying to control a library and the trustees that are endowed and have the duty to respect state law and make decisions about the operation of the library. So. So, I don't appreciate the, I appreciate some of the work that's going on, a lot of it. I don't appreciate the Appendix B where it looks like because Friends of Citizens Library isn't a 501(c)(3) that their opinion is less valid. I don't like that. MBLC was very helpful to our group before town staff apparently contacted them, and MBLC made the decision to do what town staff asked them to do, which was to propose some kind of merger, okay? They are not making, they are not lawmakers, they just help administer some funds. So, I think that's it. But I will make the note that at least one member of AML and one member of the select board were very active in trying to close the library, Citizens Library, over the years. And so, we're going to be doing a little more history, excuse me, more investigation into what was going on there. But all the words, the nice word, talking about, like, keeping the library cozy and all that, those are just nice words. We're here to, or at least you're here to, as elected officials, administer the law. You know, yes, budgets and taxes, all that. But for you all to do anything, that would be, especially when we're having, like, a huge bumblebee way, stormwater, fire trucks slipping around on the ice, and all this stuff, that, that we not try and engage in more legal expenses for what seems like a pet project to try and control the elected trustees that already have whatever powers they have under state law. And I think that's it. Do you have any questions for me? Thank you.
So, do we have any more discussion, or? So, moving forward, I am just now getting to the questions. I like that list of questions. And I, I do have a lot, you know, like, what gives the town the authority to merge the two trustee boards? How, how does the town have the authority to change the trustee authority? So, that would be a meeting, eh, at town meeting. Is that right, a vote? Or?
So, I want to be really careful not to speak in a, in a way to try and explain what town council has said, because I'm afraid I'm going to mess it up. But it, I, I don't know if there needs to be a vote at town meeting. You know, if we were to need to change the charter, certainly. If we were need to go, if we, if we need to go back to the state legislature to, to change, amend the special act of the Memorial Library, like, it says very clearly, nine trustees. Well, that's not working for the way we're operating things now, so we need to absorb this, eh, an additional three trustees from this other board. If we need to amend the deed, then that would need to be in front of a judge. So, so I don't know who, who we need to go to. But those are the questions that certainly need to be asked.
And the, the last speaker was just alluding, we have town staff who would run the library, so it wouldn't be a vote at town meeting for instructing staff. That is already in place. Did I hear that correctly?
I'm, I'm not sure I heard that, but certainly, it's not the place of town meeting to give staff direction, or, you know, direct a department how, how staffing happens, or write job descriptions, or, or any of that. That's up to, to the professional staff.
Thank you. Any more, eh, questions?
Yeah, what, what I did hear was that, eh, an assertion that the Mass Board of Library Commissioners was being directed by staff. And that's, that's certainly not my experience of my interactions with staff at MBLC, and also hearing from other library directors in other communities, they're getting the, the same message. So, it's not, it's not specific to Acton. It's, it's a goal of, you know, library governance. And, and also, I don't think that very many people on the committee appreciated as much as I did the research into governance models in other communities, but that was extraordinarily helpful for me. Because when I reviewed websites, when I spoke with, with staff, when I spoke with folks at MBLC, and also when I asked questions of town council, I came to a different understanding than I had a couple of years ago about the, the great variety in governance of, of boards. You know, some boards have five, some boards have 12. There's a town where there are 25 trustees. They currently have, like, 12 vacancies. I wonder why. Some, some library trustee boards are appointed by mayors or town managers. You know, some, some boards have a member of, of the school, a member of the clergy, you know, it's, it's, it's a great variety of structure. And so, I think that, that Chapter 78 is deliberately vague to allow for a community to establish a governance over the libraries that, that works for them. And, and I'm, and I'm definitely in favor of having trustees of, at libraries answering to the public. But the, there are a great number of library boards where not all of them are elected, including the Memorial. There are only three of those nine elected, and the others are, are corporate. And that's been the case since, you know, the late 1800s. And it, and it's been working pretty well.
Thank you.
I get my questions for you, Alyssa. Nicely done, by the way. At our last meeting in this room, a lot of questions were asked that dealt with legal matters that were unable to be addressed. Will those be addressed?
I hope so, Annette.
I mean, I'm, I'm a little confused about what a proposal having been made without all those legal questions having been answered. But I guess my second question, and I, I know you kind of answered that now, but I just wanted to make the point that I appreciate that the lack of, of legal analysis and clarity really is a stumbling block to proceeding. The other question is, do you have a sense on how much money?
Can you address your questions to me, and then I'll?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought I was supposed to.
No worries, no worries.
I'm sorry. Okay, Franny.
Thanks. And, and then, then I'll address Alyssa.
All right. The other question is, can I have a, a sense on how much money the town has spent on legal fees relating to Citizens Library? You probably don't have it off the top of your head, but I would be interested in knowing that, if it's possible.
Okay.
So, everything I just asked Alyssa, really missed, to go to you then.
Yeah.
So, I think she already answered, but thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Did, did you have an answer?
I, I do have an answer. Because we did hear a lot of questions from the public who attended the public forum, and some of them were, were legal, not all of them by any stretch. The, the reason that we want to proceed by coming to the select board and presenting our recommendation before going through the exercise of answering all of those legal questions is because it doesn't make sense if the board had responded to the recommendation, like, mm, no, that's not going to work for us, we want you to go back and, you know, start from, from the beginning, or go on a different path, right? Then we have different questions. So, I wanted to make sure that you all heard the, the report of the committee's work, the consensus, the, the recommendation reached by consensus, and then, once we know what the will of the board is, then we can go and pursue those answers. So, I know it's, it's frustrating for the public who has these questions to have to, to wait. But I certainly would not frame the situation as a lack of legal analysis because we've certainly had town council weighing in on this for a number of years. Six, seven? I mean, I, I went through not every single meeting minute from the Citizens Library trustees, but certainly the bulk of them, going back to 2017, when, when Dean was a trustee. So, this, this work to bring the two boards together, to bring the two libraries together in, in closer collaboration, has been going on since 2017, 2018. So, there's been plenty legal analysis that's been done.
Thank you. Jim, and then David, sorry.
If, if we're at the point of making a, a motion, I'd be happy to try to construct such a thing.
Sounds good.
So, I would move that the select board support the recommendation of the CLGAC, including their, eh, let's see, that's the first part, and that they should proceed to work with town council to flesh this out, to understand, you know, how this can be done, you know, what needs to happen, in what order.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you so much for listening.
And the committee for all your work, yeah.
And I just want to thank all of the committee members, because it was a great variety of, of opinions, and I really appreciate it, having so many differing voices.
May I just say that it's fine that Alyssa abstained, but there is certainly no reason that she needed to accuse herself. She could have easily voted in, in that. We all work on individual projects, and we all vote in them.
So, then it's unanimous. Aye. Welcome again, Kayla.
Thanks for having me again.
Yes. Lisa, that, that last vote was unanimous. Did you, yeah. Yep. So, number 10, we're, our presentation and update for Habitat for All.
Hi, thank you, members of the board, Kayla Sowers, senior planner for the town. Hopefully, this is relatively quick, I know it's pretty late tonight. So, I'm here to provide an update on the Habitat for All initiative that the planning, conservation, and sustainability departments received a grant to work on, starting this past summer. I was last before you about a year ago to get started on this initiative. So, very briefly, as a quick overview, this initiative is conducting a community engagement effort to explore how Acton can improve their current natural resource protection zoning, and also exploring how Acton could implement inclusionary zoning. So, under the state subdivision control law, a planning board must approve a subdivision plan that complies with the rules and regulations. So, on the left, we have Acton's current standard subdivision process, which is very typical across Massachusetts. In this scenario, the entire law is typically carved up into individual lots, and a road is created to access the newly created lots. There is no requirement for any of the land to be preserved as open space, and it is typical for the majority, if not all, of the lot to be clear-cut. On the right, we have Acton's current form of natural resource protection zoning, the PCRC. So, this type of development allows developers to build homes on a certain percentage of lot, while the remainder of the lot is preserved as open space. So, natural resource protection zoning is typically more environmentally friendly. Sorry about that, my notes are backwards. So, this project had a very methodical, eh, public outreach process. So, we gathered broad community feedback based on goals, outlined in the town's guiding documents. We then further refined these goals through community visioning, and are now looking to refine the concept. So, we had a starting point based on the three separate guiding documents that each had their own robust community engagement process. So, all three of these plans had direct goals and action items that pointed us towards engaging on this initiative. We then surveyed the general public throughout the summer about these broad concepts to ensure we were heading in the right direction. You can see in that middle column that there was wide support into determining how Acton can preserve a certain percentage of open space with residential developments, how we could incentivize smaller homes, and how we could include affordable housing in new developments. So, based on the feedback supporting these concepts, we were able to come up with a more refined proposal and to test the proposal through in community engagement sessions over the past month or so. The results tell us that making natural resource protection zoning, the byright method of subdivision is a priority. That's that first picture there, they all picked the same option. And then, along with the support for an option of inclusionary zoning that allows for more small homes in contrast to fewer large homes. So, that brings us to where we are tonight, the beginning of our next phase, sorry, back. We received clear direction from the public on the path they would like us to pursue. So, we have since met with our advisory group to review a draft concept proposal and received support to move ahead with our next steps. So, we're here before the select board tonight to share this draft concept proposal with you and receive your feedback. So, that brings us to our draft approach. Sorry, this is a filler slide. So, one of the questions we asked the public is whether they supported requiring new residential development in Acton to preserve a certain percentage of open space. We heard overwhelmingly that this was a priority. So, based on that feedback, we are proposing to completely change the permitting process for subdivisions to make the natural resource protection zoning the easier process. We are proposing to make the PCRC bylaw the byright method of subdivision, and the standard subdivision requires a special permit, which has those additional discretionary findings. In addition to making the PCRC bylaw the byright method of subdivision, we are looking to make improvements to the bylaw at the same time. So, this includes eliminating the current eight-acre minimum, enabling all parcels that can be subdivided to use the PCRC bylaw, requiring comprehensive mapping of natural resources using the Sudbury Valley trustees model prior to site planning, strengthening requirements for street trees, and establishing a vegetation, eh, vegetation buffer between existing roads and new developments to maintain natural aesthetics. And along with these, we would also consider some other improvements to the bylaw. So, another question we asked the public was, would you support allowing more homes if they were smaller? And we received clear direction that there was support. We took a look at the original PCRC bylaw as a starting point. So, when the PCRC bylaw was originally adopted, the calculation to determine how many units that could be on a piece of land was based on the standard dimensional regulations. So, for example, in the R2 zoning district, you could have one house for every 20,000 square feet. That was the full calculation. This was changed twice due to citizens petitions in 2000, and again in 2003. This change resulted in the reduction in the number of homes that could be allowed on a piece of land. So, now, in an R2 zoning district, you do one house for every 20,000 square feet, but then you take a 20% cut of that total unit. So, PCRCs built prior to 2000 and 2003, which was actually significant. We had more PCRCs in the 90s than we did to have subdivisions, which is just an interesting stat. Developments such as Hafn Hill, Audubon Hill, they actually have more homes than what are currently allowed. So, this proposal would allow for development to occur as the bylaw originally constructed, using the general unit yield without the cut, when cottage-style and smaller homes are proposed. Because subdivision cannot limit the size of homes, we can't say, you can't build a home larger than the size, the proposal rather looks to incentivize building smaller homes. So, we are still working on the details of how this would work out specifically, but have received support from the public and advisory group that this is a priority and to move forward. And then finally, we also asked the public if they supported determining how Acton could either require or incentivize affordable housing here in Acton. We received broad support, along with specific, specific support on the menu option that is before you on this slide. So, our consultant, JM Goldson, conducted an economic feasibility analysis to determine what levels of affordability and what size homes Acton market could support. Based on this analysis, this menu concept before you is the result. Because public feedback wanted to focus on smaller homes in addition to affordable homes, their analysis broke out the results by size of home. What this menu is trying to do is really put larger homes, which is what we typically see built in subdivisions, on the same playing field as cottage-style or smaller homes. This is why more cottage-style homes are allowed in comparison to larger homes. So, for example, if the town is allowing for one single-family home on 100,000 square feet, which we do require in our 10, our 10 zoning district, land costs are so high that a developer is going to build the largest home they can to maximize their profits. But if we allow for more smaller homes that yield them the same profit overall, smaller homes are now on the same playing field as larger homes. And then, so finally, to take a quick look at our remaining timeline, you can see here our next steps, but tonight, I'm before the select board to hear any questions, receive any feedback before we take our next step. So, thank you for having me tonight. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kayla. It's nice to hear the feedback. It's nice to hear the feedback from the public. David?
So I think this makes so much sense. Thank you. This is great. I have two pretty small and detailed questions. What is meant by strengthened tree and vegetation buffers? This law has no effect because you're talking about inherent, from my reading, it seems to be a presumption that we're talking about a subdivision or multiple houses, right? It could be a small subdivision because you reduce the eight-acre minimum, but if you had a one-acre lot that's empty, it doesn't affect that.
So it depends on the zoning district, of course. So let's use R2 as the example, because that's the one that's most prevalent. So the minimum lot size requirement is 20,000 square feet. So say there's a lot out there right now, which I'm sure there's a couple, that 20,000 square feet has no home on it. This would not affect that. They would still only be allowed that one home, because they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be able to subdivide the lot, if that answers your question.
Okay, yeah, that does answer my question. And that means if there was a one-acre lot, you could produce a two-small-home subdivision potentially.
Exactly, based off that calculation.
Thank you.
Or if they were able to opt into one of these other options, for example, the cottage-style home, you could do three units an acre, but they would do the, actually, I take that back, because you need five units to be able to opt into that option. I apologize for that. So they wouldn't be able to option to that, because that's when the affordability requirement kicks in. I didn't explain that through the presentation, but basically, you can't just require, right, at like one unit, that you have to provide an affordable unit, because then no one would build it. So what the proposal is that at five units, that optional inclusionary zoning option kicks in. So this option wouldn't be available for anyone who's looking to build less than five homes. So I apologize for that.
Thank you.
Dean?
So as far as the consideration about looking at vegetative buffers, tree planting, tree protection, is your intention that this be ready and included and approved at town meeting, or is that going to be a follow-along process? Just because my experience in working with other towns that have such rules and regulations, they're quite lengthy, and I imagine they're going to take a while to get written. So it just, is this going to be one and done at town meeting in May, or do you think there's going to be a follow-along process?
That's a great question. I think the intent is that it will be a one-and-done process. You know, we have a member of the Design Review Board and the Conservation Commission, who's been on our advisory group, who have been very helpful for this process, and we're actually going to be meeting with the Conservation Commission and the Design Review Board in January to get their feedback on it. And, you know, I think we already have it written on how we have the street tree requirement, so I think that's an easy one, but just whether or not we want to improve it. The vegetative buffer is something that we've already been discussing internally with staff on how we'd handle that with conservation staff. So I'm confident that we'd be able to have that ready. But I guess we'll see.
Thank you.
Hi, Kayla. I think the fundamental concept here is exactly right on, to change the default byright subdivision from a conventional subdivision that, you know, rips out everything that grows and replaces it all with, you know, carefully spaced houses, with a natural resources kind of zoning or subdivision control law. So naturally, though, I have a bunch of questions. When we last talked about this topic, we imagined two different working groups. There was, Alyssa was assigned to a working group that was going to be working on Habitat for All, and Dean was assigned to a group that was going to be looking at tree protection in other situations, you know, like in single-family units or businesses or, you know, whatever is not covered by the subdivision control bylaw. And so I thought I should check in to find out where that second part of the, that other part of the process is at. Has this working group begun to be formed? Have you decided that you're not going to form it? Where are we at with that?
Yeah, that's a great question. You know, at this point, that working group has not been formed, but I can follow up with Kristin, our planning director, and we can kind of see what the next steps are for that, to get that going.
Okay, thanks. I mean, in terms of the impact on Acton, it seems like there's a lot, there seems to be more, you know, single-family redevelopment and development right now than there is subdivisions. But, you know, that changes from year to year. But I think it's an important piece not to lose track of. The next question was, okay, so I'll admit, I live on Half Moon Hill, and I love it there. And one of the things that makes that community architecturally is that the houses can be close together. In the earlier version of the PCRC bylaw, the setbacks were set aside, basically, you know. We have, you know, so there's, it supports the community sense to not have the houses, you know, be required to have all these big side yards. And I was wondering how the working group had thoughts about that. And since you guys did, you know, tour around Half Moon Hill and, you know, sort of looked at it, were there any conversations about, you know, bringing back that feature of the old PCRC bylaw? And how did those conversations go?
Yeah, that's a great question. So for the board's reference, the original bylaw allowed for the homes to be closer together. So during one of the changes, if the homes are over a certain size, they have to be farther apart now. So yes, that's something the working group has just started kind of talking about. We mostly focused on making sure we understood the overall approach, but when, you know, I'm referring to making other improvements to the bylaw, that is something that we are definitely going to be looking at and considering, what those setback requirements are for the homes. Because in the PCRC bylaw, it's not based off of lot lines like you typically do, right? You have to be 30 feet from your front lot line. It's based off of the distance between the homes themselves.
Okay. One thing I didn't understand, well, when we originally talked about this proposal, we understood that to make something byright and not subject to a special permit, the natural resource zoning had to be, the natural resource identification had to be some kind of objective process that could be applied, you know, by a potential developer, say, oh, you know, look at this map, or, you know, look for these certain kinds of bioregions, or, you know, that had to be something that wasn't subject to, you know, the arbitrary decisions of a board saying, no, no, that little habitat over there, that's important. You have to protect it. So you did talk about improving natural resource mapping, but I didn't really know what that meant.
Yeah, that's a great question. So the plan is, so during the open space and recreation process for the plan, we utilized the Sudbury Valley Trustees Model. That's how we did the ranking of the parcels, for the private parcels, on like what the priority is for purchasing in the future. And we found that mapping system, we're like, great, this is something that we would actually be able to, you know, we've discussed with SVT, and a developer would be able to just, you know, download the, there's four different criteria, and be able to download it and actually show on the map where the high priority resources are. So in theory, you would kind of have that on there. You'd say, hey, where's, you know, it's a darker green spot, and then you'd cite where the development is after. So we still have to craft, you know, how that actually works in language terms, but that's the idea behind that.
When you did your, whether it was polling or focus group or communications about inclusionary zoning, were there other, were there standards that people looked at that were different than the 80% AMI? You know, I mean, in particular, in Acton, it seems like there's, there's a, where our area median income is relatively high, there's a whole lot of people that are left out at the 80% level. And if, so I was wondering about the, either the popularity or the feasibility of having that number be lower.
Yeah, absolutely. So that is something that Jen Goldson's team looked at. I think what, just from a basic standpoint, if you were to offer, for example, right now it's 10% at 80% AMI. If you did 10% at 60% AMI, you'd have to increase that density allowance. That would just be the natural progression. So we haven't received like our final write-up from JM Goldson yet. So that's something that we're hoping to get, that just what like what they would, you know, what their analysis says that density is, and we could always see if that is another option that the public would like to see pursue.
I mean, to follow up on that, it seems like you, you're already pursuing a higher-density approach with the smaller houses. And those smaller houses are exactly the ones that would be more likely to be able to be made affordable to people of lower incomes. So you may not eat, you may not need to have, you know, an explicit density bonus based on affordability, as long as you have this implicit density bonus based on the size of the houses. I mean, certainly, you know, smaller houses are, you know, meet a lot of the goals laid out in the Housing Production Plan really nicely, because they are, you know, they're smaller, they're more affordable. And I know you can't, you know, limit the size of houses. And in fact, in some ways, that would, that would get in the way of the goals of the plan, because you have people with large families, and you're not going to say to them, oh, in Acton, you just can't live here because we don't allow large houses. So I get that. But in terms of those smaller houses that could, you know, potentially be made more affordable, I think that's where you might want to look at, you know, reducing that AMI limit, because you're already looking at houses that are more naturally affordable.
Yeah, we can definitely look at that.
Any questions? Thank you, Kayla, very much.
Thank you all for having me.
And now, next up, sorry, review CPC applications.
So Dean is on the CPC, but I just wanted to have Tom run through the projects that we're aware of, and then if you could walk us through the process of the CPC things they envisioned, that'd be helpful.
Thank you, John. All right, everyone. Up on the screen, you'll see 13 projects that are listed that are town project, I'm sorry, 15. I'll make it bigger. All right, let's see. Is this a little bit better for everybody? There we go. So there's 13 projects that are up on the screen, and some of these are typical classes. You'll see three of them at the bottom that are year-over-year. And what we're looking for some guidance on is preferences from the board. If there's a project here that you feel strongly about one way or the other, that you would like to see continue, or you would like to see polled and looked at for a future year, what we're hoping to gain is some guidance on how you recommend us proceeding, or would like us to proceed.
Thank you. So this, this process got started over 10 years ago when it became apparent that town staff was bringing CPC projects' request to the committee that had not necessarily been vetted by the Select Board, and there were some projects that members of the Select Board at that time felt, you know, was at variance from what their own priorities were. So this, in one form or another, this has been going on for about 10 years, where CPC asked for input from the Select Board, and our input as Select Board members is one factor that CPC will consider during the deliberations. As I noted earlier tonight, there's about an $800,000 gap between the requests and the amount of money that is available to fund. So obviously, some cuts have to be made. The town projects represent a considerable portion of the total number of requests that have been submitted to the CPC at this point. So one of the things that the Select Board could do is you could look through this list and you could decide and direct the town manager that we want one of the, one or more of these projects to be withdrawn or cut back in size. Or you could decide that they all look good. Having the Select Board endorse every one of these projects and not making any other comments is frankly not helpful at all. It's pretty much a waste of our time. So I think if you folks are comfortable with these projects, some prioritization would certainly be handy. Now, I can kind of bounce you through this list, some of the things we really, that are considered town projects but are really not debatable. Bottom line, the debt service for Wright Hill and Piper Lane, that has got to be paid. Those are like the first dollars that come out of CPC. So that's not under consideration. The administrative support, again, that's something that the, the town, planning staff, finance department staff, and legal budget, all are dependent upon that. And in the past, it's been just a straight 5% of the total amount, but our planning staff has been very fiscally responsible, and they've been analyzing it very carefully. So that represents a very realistic number, not just a rounding of 5%. Some of the other sorts of projects that might be things you want to consider, Community Housing Program Fund, ACHC comes up with money from developers and grants, and they're supplemented with town funds. And it basically is a chunk of money that they can put into various projects, support for new homeowners, training for folks, there's lots of different options, buy-down provisions. In order for the money to come out of the ACHC, the Community Housing Program Fund, ACHC has to come before this board to get those specific allocations approved and voted. I think we did one just fairly recently. So even if you vote the full $200,000 and endorse that idea, you've still got some control over it. RHSO, Regional Housing Service Office, that's been debated back and forth about whether that is something, and the officers there support our affordable housing inventory, and they just, they're specialists in this. They provide a level of expertise far beyond what, as an individual town, we could provide. I think there's 11 towns in the community now, in the service office right now. So it's, it's very valuable to us, to the town. However, in the past, folks have suggested that that should be paid for out of the town operating budget rather than CPC. Personally, I've always favored coming out of CPC, but some of my other colleagues on the board have felt differently. So that goes back and forth, and I think that might be a subject for discussion if you so choose. And then just work our way right through the rest of these projects. If there's any specific questions that people have, I'm reasonably familiar with these applications. Some of them are quite lengthy. The, I'd be happy to answer any questions to help you with your deliberations. Any guidance you can provide is important. CPC will probably, will certainly take your, our considerations into their deliberations, but they might not follow them. So don't anybody get hurt feelings. So if there's any specific questions, I would be happy to address them.
I'm happy to start.
And since a lot of these have certainly got the town manager's fingerprints on it, I'm sure John would be happy to discuss them as well.
If I could start, that would be great. So just as far as timing... So just as far as timing for 17 Woodbury, could this be something that we could ask for next year, CPC?
That's, that's a great question. So the timing for this, for the landscape and the shutters, those will be some of the last items that are done at the building. Before having a contractor in place and knowing what their exact schedule is, I think it's safe to say that we would be in a position come July, if the funding was awarded to this project, to be able to undertake both of those. It kind of lines up perfectly with, with the schedule that we're looking at. We do anticipate this being a six-to-10-month project. We did incorporate that into the bid, a longer lead time as well, to try to entice a contractor to give a more favorable number since it would be a longer lead time. So a long way of saying that those two items really will probably start right around the July timeframe.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Jim?
Just a question first. So Dean, I know that some of these categories have minimums under the CPA law. And in some cases, in past years, with categories that are kind of undersubscribed, it's been like, oh, well, I guess we'll, we need to do all of these just to make our minimums. Is there any category like this this year, or are they all, you know, over the, over the minimums?
They, they would all be over the minimum. You know, the community housing is one of the big ones, but there is, what you don't see is a request for over a quarter of a million dollars for some building upgrades at Satcham Way through the Housing Authority. So they're well above that. The historic resources, there is some other, there's a project at the Hosmer House that has received or that has submitted a request. If the board decided to eliminate all of the town historic resource projects, and we had just the Hosmer House left, one, one left, we'd probably be below the minimum, and then we'd just put the money aside and use it for future projects. So we'd, we'd be holding it in reserve, in effect, for future years. But, you know, there's some pretty good-sized historic resource projects that you've got here. And the recreation ones, there is no required minimum for the recreation projects.
David?
Thank you. So first, I agree with Dean that the, the top two and the bottom two are kind of givens to me. Then the second priority for me is projects that we've been, been working on, you know, so the, the lines three, four, and five for 17 Woodbury and 53 River Street, these are projects that, you know, we have started in when, you know, at least in cases 17 Woodbury, at least through the design phase. In case of 53 River Street, probably 80% of the way through the construction phase. Those things, I think we should, should finish. So I would put those in the, in the second priority after the, the top two and bottom two. Then the small ones, like, you know, that you get a lot of bang for the buck, like the interpretive panel at Heath and Meadow, or the library preservation assessment, things like that, that, to me, there's a lot of benefit. The, the others I would throw in the middle. And the only one that I would dispute here is the open space set-aside being so large. So we used to put, first of all, just to put it in perspective, that's almost equal to all the rest combined, right? And second of all, we only, only went to $750,000 last year, I believe. Before that, we had traditionally put in half a million dollars. And thirdly, we just, at this town meeting, spent current and future monies in $3.7 million. And fourthly, any land purchases going forward, frankly, are going to involve bonding, right? The set-aside was more meaningful in the past, and when the Open Space Committee had a certain limit on the, the dollars per acre, that limit is just so far in the past now. The dollars per acre on the parcels that we're preserving now, which I think are very important, I mean, extremely happy we preserved Wetherby, is, but it's such that the, the set-aside matters less. And I think it precludes, you know, basically, you could get all these other things. So I, I would reduce, I wouldn't eliminate the open space set-aside, but I would reduce it quite a bit. I certainly wouldn't leave it at 3/4 of a million dollars. Again, the precedent is only just last year that that level, before it was half a million. And, and so I, I would like to see, at least from my priorities, even though I completely support open space preservation, I don't think it's necessary to put so much into the set-aside, and it precludes the, all these other projects.
Alyssa?
So I'm kind of inclined this year to, I mean, not that we don't do it every year, leave the decision up to the Community Preservation Committee. But I guess just to make a couple of points in response to what I've heard, the, the set-aside was historically, yeah, less, yes. It was also showing that we could purchase land parcels. Like, it was good for a seller to see that the town had a large open space set-aside. Other towns, I learned on my time on the CPC, don't have that because they just bond everything. I think Concord is one of them. So, you know, obviously, open space is, is increasing in cost because the price of land is going up. So I was okay with the increase in the amount that the CPC has awarded in, in recent years. Also, the return on investment is, is incredible because of all the natural services that open space provides. I think that the CPC members can look at our short-term and long-term goals and see which of these projects aligns with those. Because on our short-term goals, number five is complete the River Street Park. So I think it makes a lot of sense to prioritize funding for projects that have begun and need to be completed. And also historic preservation. I do want to correct, Jim, what you said about, oh, we have to fund these all so we can meet the 10% minimum. That didn't ever happen on the committee. They judged the projects on, on the applications on their merits. And if there were some that they didn't feel were worthy of funding, then it was put aside, kind of like the open space set-aside. But given that point, I think there's another consideration in that historic preservation funds, like other sources of funding, that are hard to come by for historic preservation. So, and that's the number-one goal in our comprehensive community plan, is to preserve what remains of those historical resources. So I'm always in support of historic preservation projects. But the committee knows what it's doing, so I trust them. And also, you know, I'm looking at the antique fire truck restoration and thinking, $200,000, that's a lot. But I haven't looked at the application, so I don't really want to comment on whether or not I support that or not. But it's very cool, and it drove around town on Saturday, woke me up.
I was curious about the 74 cents for greening the Red House.
I was curious how that is classified as recreation.
Yeah. You know, I've, I've had some questions on that, whether that is appropriately a recreation project. I understand that, you know, it's going to be, you know, some passive recreational areas with sort of a, you know, planters and that sort of thing there. But, you know, from my point of view, $84,000 for that, we did have a group that met for about two years to try to look at eventually building a senior park between the Dog Park and the new McManus Manor project. And basically backed off on it for a lot of reasons, but one of it was because we thought it was going to be too much money. So, you know, this, if you got money for doing this, maybe it should have gone into the senior park, which is almost completely designed. We've already invested in that. So I'm not sure, I need to look at their application a little bit more carefully to determine from my own point of view if it really is a legitimate recreation project or not. That's a consideration. The other issue that I would raise with the antique fire apparatus restoration, yeah, it's a lot of money. There's two fire trucks, and could be that maybe they only get half of this and do one fire truck and then do another one later on. It might be a way to, to split that, make a, and that might be a determination made by CPC, or it might be a recommendation that you folks can come up with. You know, the, the fire department, you know, passionately loves those fire trucks, but they are after all the town assets. So they're legitimately under the control of the town manager and, and this board. So that's a, a consideration that you might want to think about.
And I, I wasn't commenting on greening the Red House in a negative way. I just was curious about the price. And I happen to have helped their digging, and I think their plan for having it a community sort of interactive garden is such a great idea. So I, I'm not opposed to that at all. Jim?
Yeah, just some personal reactions to some of them. So one, one of the lenses I was looking at here was, you know, has the constituency already come together to, you know, work on these things and be enthusiastic about them? And, you know, the vast disc golf community has not really come forward and spoken to us and, you know, written letters or, you know, I, I, I'm sure it would get used because disc golf, you know, gets used wherever it is. But I, I, I don't see the urgency of it based on, you know, support in the wider world. Same thing with the antique fire apparatus restoration, which is like, as Dean was saying, there's a small but very passionate group of people who want to work on that. I, I think, you know, getting into the business of appropriately not only restoring but also displaying antique apparatus may be better done by, you know, a museum that's, you know, specialized, like, you know, a transportation museum that specializes in, you know, restoration and, and actually getting things out there for people to learn from. So I think, to my mind, anyway, we have, we have the possibility here of actually, you know, donating or selling these things to a group that would actually do a great job with, with restoration and display and education. And that might be a more positive direction. The interpretive panel is such a small number, but again, I, I don't, it seems so specific to me that, you know, and we have interpretive panels all over the place. And why this particular one should get supported by the CPA and not come out of someone's budget? I, I, you know, I think that I trust the committee to read the application and understand why, but my initial reaction is, is not so favorable on that one. Greening the Red House, as Fran noted, she's not the only one who's been involved there. There was a big outreach process, a lot of people have shown up, a lot of people have, you know, already started doing work there. So I prefer to see that funded somehow. You know, if this, if, if the committee decides that, you know, some of that can be stretched out over a couple of years and reduces that amount, I, I, you know, every step forward is progress with that, with that work. It doesn't have to all be done at once. Yeah, I think those are my main comments. Yeah, that's, that's all I got.
Alyssa?
Thanks. I was just going to offer that people are probably going to picnic at the Red House, so it could be recreation. I, I think I agree with the, the board members who have suggested that urgency should factor into the priority. So again, I haven't read the, the application, so I don't know how urgent that antique fire apparatus restoration is. Like, will they not be able to drive around next December? I don't know. And, and I, Dean, to answer your question, sure, maybe they do one this year and, and one next year. And certainly, the, the library preservation project, that sort of has a sense of urgency because the longer you wait to preserve documents, the more deterioration happens. Although I'm sure that they are securely stored to prevent that.
You laid it out, David. You said the top two, yes, the bottom two. And then you went down the urgency. I completely agree with your list. Yep, David.
So a couple of things. I just want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, and perhaps John or Tom can comment, that the greening of the Red House, this refers to the meadow restoration, the construction of the gazebo, and the creation of paths behind the Red House. Is that correct?
That sounds like it, what it's for. I mean, we, we did just get additional funding for that project in a much smaller amount to help with other components of it. I think that's, the, what you just mentioned is the part that we don't have funding for.
Because I, I think we've already funded and have purchased the, the landscaping elements that were right around the house. In fact, volunteers, as Jim and others have mentioned, have already planted those. So I believe this refers to the, the things behind the house, which is why it's, it's kind of, it's a path through a meadow and a gazebo. So it is kind of a park, really. So just, and I, I'm on board with every, I, I like the fire trucks. I like the fact that the town owns them. I know that it costs us a little bit to keep them running. But if they were in a museum, they wouldn't, they might be runnable, but they wouldn't be usable, right? And we use them in parades. I don't know what Santa would do to get around without the fire trucks. So I'm happy to have them in our equipment. I think that's a nice, you know, outreach, you know, the kids love them, you know, I saw kids at the stops on Saturday climbing up on them, you know, so, but I agree that maybe we could do one a year or, depending on how long the restoration, especially if one goes out of service, you probably don't want to do both at the same time. If the restoration is extensive, they may not be runnable for a year. And I think there's an advantage to, you know, again, I don't want to see Santa out of service for next year, so. Or the Grinch. Well, it'd be funny to have Santa and the Grinch riding in the same truck, though. That would be a little weird. So anyway, I, I think that could be serialized. I agree with that.
So I'll stick my neck out a bit here and give back to you what the, the message that I've gotten so far is that the Community Housing Program Fund, our HSO, CPA administrative support, the debt service, we're all okay with the pretty obvious things we need to do. I think there seems to be good support for 17 Woodbury Lane and the two projects at River Street. And a couple of the smaller projects, doesn't seem to be a lot of support for disc golf. Library preservation seems to be support for that, plus it's pretty small dollars. It seems to me that there's some question about the greening the Red House, whether A, that's legitimate recreation project, and B, the dollar value of it. So I think there's some, I sense some skepticism. And I think the consensus seems to be that, yes, we like the fire trucks, but maybe hit one one year and, and then look at it later on for the second one. Am I totally wrong in this, or does that seem to be the?
I'm the outlier. I'm the one who thinks we should just sell one, sell one or both of the trucks, or give them away to a museum. But I'm, I'm, but I think you're general, the, I think you're correctly representing the general view of the board.
Did you want to say something, John? Alyssa?
So I, I didn't hear the bit about the greening the Red House. I think Fran was just commenting that it's an exact dollar and cents, like, what a great... I think Fran was just commenting that it's an exact dollar and cents, like what a great estimate that was provided, because usually it's more of a round number. So that was a funny. And I'm on board that it's recreation now that I know that it's the gazebo and yes, it's going to be a park. So I think that that is, that has support rather than skepticism. And I should have said that I support the golf, the disc golf. I only heard Jim present that perhaps there isn't a lot of support in the public, but there is quite a bit from the recreation department. They're very supportive of the folks who want to bring a disc golf course. And not only the two folks who are designing it and sort of leading the charge, but some residents who play disc golf are sort of along for that ride of going around to committees. And that was before you joined the land stewardship as the liaison that they presented to the land stewards to try and find a place for it. And I think that the really impactful piece of having disc golf enacted would be that the closest disc golf course is out in Devon's. It's quite a ways away and people travel quite a distance. And of course, if disc golf, of course, brings people to act into play, then they're going to be here maybe stopping for lunch or filling their car up with gas. So it's going to, it's going to be an economic development boon as well. But there's definitely support out in the public. They just haven't come to the select board or maybe written emails to us.
David?
I would suggest that whoever presents the Red House to the CPC have sufficient detail there as to what it's for and be able to defend the number. I mean, I like the meadow in the back, but it seems like we need some clarification there. And the disc golf, I know Jim said we hadn't heard about it before. Maybe it was because I've been on other committees, but they have presented to other committees. In fact, they were trying for a while to do it on the Morrison Farmland and, you know, other pieces. And so they've been looking for a place. And so it's not a new or out of the blue thing. People have been working on it, so.
Have you heard of soccer golf? That exists for the future.
So I will try to compile something to get the sense of the committee, but I think what I'll probably accentuate is that although they're fairly large dollar numbers, Woodbury Lane and River Street seem to be ones that everybody seems to feel like, yeah, let's just get this done. So I'd probably, if I was to prioritize, the four that we figure, Untouchable would be priority one, then River Street, Woodbury Lane would be priority two, and then work our way down through some of the other ones. And I think that that should give the committee a little bit of guidance anyway, and they'll make their own determinations.
How would you summarize what people said about the open space set aside amount?
Well, I've heard, I think I've heard one strongly in favor of cutting it back to more like a half a million. I think I've had, I think I heard some support for that idea from Alyssa as well, considering that a lot of this land is going to have to be bonded. So I didn't find any sense that people wanted to walk away from it entirely, but I think it's, it is a rich number. Look to the, so we'll probably recommend a pullback on that a bit. Any other last thoughts or? We'll see where it goes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. On to update from Public Works Building Committee.
So John stole my thunder, all my great numbers about how we've cut things back. You know, we had a, what I thought was a very good committee meeting last week here. Heard from the architect, owner's project manager. One of the critical elements that we think we've come up with is by eliminating the thought of phased construction, by moving everybody off site for the period of construction. It shortens the length of construction and it simplifies and reduces the cost of the construction itself. Town manager, myself and staff members have been touring around and looking at some alternate space that we could move into. Nothing is ideal, but what we've seen is probably workable. There will be some costs involved, obviously, in the rental of the space, but those are more than offset by the dollar value of savings that we get by shortening the construction period. One of the important things about eliminating the phased construction, knocking the entire building down and having the whole site to work with, is that it allows the designers to pull the building back a little bit from Forest Road and preserve more of a vegetated buffer between the building and the residents across the street. So that's a positive. One of the, and these designs are going to be worked on some more, but that all looks very favorable. One of the other items that they're looking at, and they won't know precisely until they've done some test, more test moorings, but it appears that in their initial estimate, they probably overestimated the number of geothermal wells that would be required. They hope within the next few weeks to be able to bring a drill rig in and do some testing for one well and see what kind of exchange they can get. So from that, they'll be able to further refine the number of how many wells you need. So their initial thought was they might be able to reduce the number of wells by as much as 25%. So that's a, that's a great number. So that's kind of factored in there, but it's still kind of unknown until we actually get the readings from the well. So those couple of items, I think, have been really good news for us. Moving the building, simplifying the construction, shortening the construction period. It's still going to be a long period of time that this is going to take place, and there's still going to be considerable disruption. Obviously, you've got to move everything out of there someplace and, you know, invariably the thing that you want is going to be in the wrong building because we might end up being in multiple locations for a period of time. Last time we did that was, they were temporarily, they had been behind the library. They had to move out of there in 1966 and they moved to Hart's Corporation and stayed there for a couple of years and then moved down to Forest Road. So not a lot of folks participated in that project are still active in local government. So we're talking 60 years ago. A couple of the particular items that are of interest is that our next DPW building meeting will be on, I've got a series of numbers here, that will be on Wednesday, January 29th, in this room, 7:00 PM. At that point, we should get some good feedback from Weston and Sampson. They took note, the committee voted to approve their approach to all of these cost-cutting measures and value engineering. So they're taking those numbers back and they'll be coming back with feedback from On Thursday, January 30th, at 1:00 PM, I'm going to be doing a public presentation at the Council on Aging to describe the project and not only the project itself, have to reassure everybody once again that this is not going to alter the transfer station operations, which is tremendously popular with the senior population, myself included. So I'll be doing that presentation. And then at this point, it looks like on Saturday, January 25th, from 10 until noon, we'll be having public tours of the existing building. And we've still got to work out who's going to be participating in that, but that's, we think it's important that folks get a chance to walk around there and take a look at it. So we're going to do that. If there's a snowstorm, that's not a good place for lots of members of the public to be walking around in. So our snow date will be the following Saturday, which will be February 1st. So that's sort of the immediate update. Tom, is there anything that I've missed that you think we should bring up at this point?
Nope, I thought it was pretty detailed.
Okay, it's going very well. David?
So I thought the, I thought the value engineering list was excellent and the people did a really good job figuring that out. I heard in the discussion skepticism on three of the items, though, building out the Wash Bay, the sound wall, sound barrier wall, and the full mezzanine level. And your feeling, how do those stand? Do you think they're tending in or tending out or what's your approach to those?
I think at this point, the mezzanine will stay in its originally designed size. We're not going to do the 10% reduction. The sound wall, we're looking at some options there that, and they had, they were carrying a number of like $800,000 for a sound barrier. We need to take a closer look at that. Because now we've realigned the building somewhat, how is that going to impact the amount of wall that might be needed? So that's got to be looked at. There's also a possibility that the sound barrier wall would be something that could be constructed with town forces rather than make it part of the general contract. It would certainly still be something, a feature of the project, but it just might be a less expensive way of doing it. We had a fairly lengthy discussion about prevailing wage costs and, you know, in rough numbers, the hourly wages for our employees is about a third of what prevailing wages. And then in addition to that, you consider if something goes into the general contract, there's the overhead, the profit, the markup. So the numbers go up pretty quickly. So I think there's some consideration of that. I think the Wash Bay buildout is still a little bit up in the air. One feature that we did determine is the original design for the Wash Bay included a concrete slab run-up where you would wash all of the heavy material off the trucks before they went into the Wash Bay. Corey York seemed quite confident that actually paving it with asphalt as opposed to concrete is cheaper, equally durable, and is probably something that if it needs to be replaced is something that our forces can do. And that's another item that's still being considered again is the amount of pavement around the site. I mean, we've got a very experienced crew as far as paving and landscaping and these sorts of things that can be pulled out of the project. Typically, they are. You know, the red flowering horse chestnut that Alyssa noted the other day, earlier tonight, it seemed like the other day. Actually, it was something that I planted when we were doing the landscaping for this building in the 1980s, because we've got people that can do that sort of thing. Similarly, we did the landscaping in-house for most of the library and for most of the public safety building. So these are the kind of skill sets that our people have. It's just you, obviously, they're not going to be doing the normal jobs, but for a while they're going to be working on a construction project. So a lot of that's going to get worked out. And I think, I think everybody who works for the town takes tremendous pride in building something that they're going to be touching on a daily basis. You know, I still bore the heck out of everybody when I walk them around the common and show them, well, I planted that tree and that tree. So I think that's, that's an important feature, is sort of a morale builder as well for the employees.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Jim?
You may have already looked at this, but I remember that in the, in the new school construction project, they reduced the number of geothermal wells even more in exchange for some above-ground electric backup heating that would be used for, you know, the super cold days when the geothermal couldn't keep up. Now, maybe that the scale of the projects is so different that that doesn't make economic sense, but if you haven't looked at that yet, it might be worth looking at.
David?
So I talked with them a bit about that, the, Weston and Sampson, a bit about that after the meeting. So there's two things that I'll note. One is the detail is not there yet. I asked them what the heat load of the building was and they didn't know exactly. These are all more general estimates and they're still working on refining them. Second, one thing to note, though, is the coldest times are overnight, right? And the school is not occupied overnight. The DPW building and the firehouse are occupied overnight. And so just note that that's different and going to resistance backup at the coldest time of the day rather than let the building temperature fall, which you can do in the school, that may or may not be appropriate for the DPW building. So, but further work has to be done there.
Dean?
I think the other thing that we, we didn't really touch on very much is that there are, you know, some substantial potential grants that we can get to assist with some of the energy consumption portions of this building. Most of you folks, if you haven't heard it already, you know, we've been getting criticized that, you know, why don't you just heat the building with natural gas? Why'd you be so foolish as to put geothermal wells in it? And I keep telling folks, yeah, a couple of years ago, that would be a good debate to have, but right now, it's a done deal. This is, this is what we've got. You know, the fossil fuel bylaw and everything else was passed overwhelmingly at town meeting. Whether people thought it was a good idea or not, in retrospect, that's what we have to deal with. And, yes, it's, you know, let's not fight that battle again. But the good news is that there should be some substantial money available through Mass Save, which is a utility program. There are also most likely some pretty good grants that will be available on the state level and perhaps the federal level to assist us in this. Everybody's freaking out about the change in administration in January, but, you know, hopefully the sky is not going to fall and, you know, some of this stuff will continue. If it doesn't continue, maybe we'll be in that sweet spot to get it done before the sky does fall. So I think, and those numbers have not really been fleshed out yet and they're not part of the town manager's presentation, but they're potentially some pretty substantial numbers to that point. I think now is a really important time that we get more participation from the Green Advisory Board. We do have a position on the committee for a GAB member, but has not participated. So I think having somebody from GAB there might be able to make a more convincing argument along these lines of why we're doing this than I can. So I think that would be helpful at the next meeting. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Thank you for the update. Next, update from Acton Leadership Group.
I wondered if you'd be interested in going to number 14. We have Andrea Besserra waiting.
Yes, oh, sorry.
We have Andrea Basara waiting to address that.
So 14, approved hazard mitigation plan.
Andrea, are you out there? Could you please share your screen? Thanks.
Good evening. Can you also please promote Corey York as a panelist?
Yes.
And DPW Director Corey York is here as well.
There he is. Good evening, everyone. Andrea Basara, Sustainability Director, and then Corey York is also here, DPW Director. We're going to run through the Hazard Mitigation Plan overview and then see if you have any questions about the approval process. I'll pass it over to Corey.
Sure. Yeah, so thanks again for giving us this time. Just to do a quick overview of some of the process. This is the core planning team that sort of facilitated the project. SLR is our consultant that assisted us. Andrea and her department, Sustainability, kind of were the main point of contact, and I helped assist them with it. But we also did have a larger network of sort of a local hazard mitigation team that was made up of other town staff at Acton Water District and some community members. So we tried to take a, get a big group together to kind of talk about all these issues. As you get onto the next screen here, you'll notice, this is just to talk a little bit about the last one. So the natural hazard mitigation plan itself is basically a proactive approach of looking at what natural hazards are out there and looking at the, assessing the hazards and risks and vulnerabilities with it so we can develop strategies to help either prevent or reduce the risk of loss to life and property. It's, the plan itself is structured through FEMA, and it's a five-year plan that we worked through. So our last plan that was developed was in 2018. We were able to secure a grant to do the update. So that's what we're working through right now. So as the group itself, as we looked at all these various hazards and the different risks associated, this is kind of showing the matrix of looking at all the different consequences that potentially involves sort of assigning various types of risk assessments to it, which then allowed us to then evaluate sort of the overarching goals of how we might be able to best go about handling those situations through various mitigation measures and that. So this is showing all the various hazards that were kind of identified and then walking through those various steps. And on the next slide, you'll see about, I think there's about 12 overarching goals that come out of it. Under each of these goals is a series of action steps that came along with it. But some of these goals are things you'd expect, like looking at strategies to minimize disruption to, say, your utility services, municipal operations, and various social programs that are going on. But we also looked at goals that would help promote equity. So as we're doing these assessments and looking at implementation, how would we promote equity through that? And then it definitely takes into consideration sort of outreach and education, not just to the public, but staff itself, so that we can find ways to make sure this is integrated in our day-to-day operations as well as carrying through into our budgeting capital. So it keeps it a live document and keeps it focused as we move through the next five years of we're achieving these goals and moving it forward. And it, just like with all these, it's factoring in sort of climate change and what kind of, what impacts those are, and making sure that we're, as we're addressing these, that we're being cognizant of sort of the dynamic and fluid nature of hazard situations. So I can hand this over to Andrea, and she'll take it from there.
Thank you. So we had, as Corey mentioned, a wide group of people who were part of the actual team itself. It's a mix of staff, Acton Water District representatives, and community members from Green Acton. We had three different engagement events, an open house at the library, a booth at the Acton Climate Festival, and then we also hosted a webinar in August. And then we hosted, or we had a period of public comment for a month while the plan itself was out, and it ended up being a bit longer than a month. And then we received comments over email, mostly over email. And then we did receive a lot of comments as well at the webinar and then some at the open house, which helped guide the development of the goals, an addition of goals that we created a few new goals and refined some goals from the 2018 plan based on that feedback. We included the appendix in the documents, in the select board documents. And you can see in the appendix, the list of about 18 pages of comments are in there from the public. And then in red is our comments and how we addressed all of the comments themselves. And then we also have a red line version of the actual plan itself that's in our Hazard Mitigation Plan page under the Sustainability page, where we've been including updates. And there you can also see how those comments were also incorporated. So this is where we are in the process. This started back in February 2024, and we're now in the final piece. MIMA is already reviewing the plan. It might actually already be in the hands of FEMA at this stage. And then we're in the final plan adoption. So once FEMA approves it, the next thing that's needed is the select board approval. And so that's why we're here today. We're here to ask if you can see the letter that we included in the attachments, which essentially supports the list of goals and actions in the plan itself and approves the plan. And, yep, do you have any questions for us?
Thank you, Andrea. Do we have any questions? Alyssa?
Thanks, Andrea. I have a question about what was mentioned regarding, first of all, clearing hydrants from snow on private property. And it was suggested that the select board might be able to create a policy. And then the other enforcement piece that has proven challenging is to have drainage facilities inspected and maintained on private property. So I'm wondering, first, what is the timeline that you might see for the select board to create a policy about snow removal from fire hydrants? And also, is there a mechanism where we can address the ability to have folks maintaining and get private drainage?
Getting sort of recertifications annually. It could be part of that process where people provide proof that they're showing their, like, inspection logs, that they're doing their operation and maintenance. So there is the potential of some enforcement where we could put it back on the person who owns it and should be maintaining it. But those are things that we'd have to be vetted out and really see the best approach of how to go about it, so.
Thank you. Can I ask one more question? This isn't really a question, I guess. It's more of a suggestion. I noticed that the Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan is only available to staff. And I'm wondering if there are elements of that, at least, that could be available to the public? You know, I kind of would be more comfortable as a resident knowing what the evacuation plan is, for instance, before the need for an evacuation is required.
I can take that one. The CMP is, it's an internal document. There's a lot of information about sensitive security data. So if a member of the board wanted to see it, that'd be fine. But if it's not something that we would publish. In terms of components of the plan that could be published, I'm sure there are some. If there's any that you're interested, we could do something like that.
Yeah, so I figured that there were a lot of things that needed to be private and secure, but thinking about what we might ask of residents during one emergency or another, it might be good to have people be able to review, you know, what am I going to be asked to do? So I know ahead of time, I can anticipate it. And I don't know, you know, what's in the plan. So I wouldn't be able to ask for specifics unless I had a look at it and was able to see. I love the pieces of this plan that encourage residents to improve their self-sufficiency, whether or not, you know, it's learning CPR or having certain things on hand to make sure that they're okay in an emergency or having phone trees or something that we know that we can check on people who might not have access to a vehicle or who might otherwise be vulnerable. So I love, I love that. And I feel like knowing what I need to do in a different kind of emergency, you know, for all residents, I think that that would be helpful.
Thank you. Jim?
I've reviewed this certificate of adoption by the select board, this letter here, and I'm entirely comfortable with it. Whenever the board feels so inclined, I'd be happy to move that we approve it.
A second?
Oh, okay. I've moved that we approve this letter, this certificate of adoption.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
And then moving on to approved decarbonization roadmap letter for Green Communities Climate Leader application.
Good evening. That's me again. So I will go ahead and share my screen. So this work has been done in collaboration with the Acton Boxborough Regional School District. This is part of the Climate Leaders certification. So the application is due at the end of the month for the first cohort of climate leaders in the state. So I've mentioned this climate leader program in the past. So we meet every criteria for becoming a climate leader. We even have our own municipal decarbonization roadmap. We have our facility study, and we have our electrification roadmap that were published in the last three years. This is basically a summary of that municipal decarbonization roadmap or a summary of those two studies in the format that the DOER would like it to be submitted as part of this process, which includes a letter of approval from the select board. And it also includes buildings from the Acton Boxborough Regional School District, which were already approved by their superintendent. So this is a summary of the climate leader benefits. Recently, in the last month, the Healy Driscoll Administration announced $60 million towards the climate leader grant funding. This is basically going to mean that our current Green Communities ceiling will go up from 125 to 225. We're in the million-dollar club, so we've gotten over $1 million from the Green Communities Program in the last decade. So being a climate leader will increase that, the amount that we can get from the Green Communities Program to 225. We will be able to receive $150,000 towards electrification for technical support or up to 1,000, I'm sorry, up to 1 million towards the actual electrification of a building. There's been discussion of other grant funds that haven't yet been fully defined by the program as the program continues to grow. We would definitely be one of the pilot communities in this program. So another benefit that we see is leading by example. So in the actual report itself, you see the timeline for electrification, which matches, again, the facility study, which was published in 2023, and then the electrification roadmap, which was published in 2022. And then the Acton Boxborough Regional School District also includes its timeline up to 2050. And the requirement is that you're meeting the decarbonization goal of the state for decarbonizing buildings by 2050. So this is the letter that we've included in the packet for approval by the select board. And if you have any questions, please let me know. And I also want to just shout out Lauren West, our environmental analyst, who spearheaded this whole process, creating the actual electrification roadmap itself and coordinating very closely with Kate Crosby from the Acton Boxborough Regional School District, who also worked pretty hard on putting this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea, and thank you, Lauren. Do we have questions? I think this is, Jim?
Question for John, I guess. Is the roadmap reasonably aligned with our capital improvement plan?
It is.
Doing the smaller buildings for much less, that sounds awesome. And being eligible for more in grant money also sounds awesome. So thanks for all the work that went into putting this together.
Do we have, yep.
I would happily move to approve the signing of this letter that notes that we approved the decarbonization roadmap of the Community Division's Climate Leaders Application for Certification.
Second. All in favor? Thanks for your time, Andrea.
Thank you all so much. Good night.
If we had a meeting evaluation, I would suggest that the discussions that are primarily the board members that we just had, like the CPC prioritization, Public Works, and we didn't get to the ALG update, but those may be in future go after agenda items that require staff to be here. I don't know what time they normally go to bed, but it's probably not 11:00.
There was a request to have it be later on the agenda. I don't think they understood how late later meant, but that was.
Thank you for clarifying, because I was feeling a little guilty.
No, because I'm in complete agreement. Yep. So should we jump back to ALG? I feel like it's smooth sailing from here.
I think that we're in a better position than we have been in the past, partly due to the support of the override last year, which changed the dynamics of the revenue that we've been struggling with over the years. But it's still all the work that needs to be done and a lot of consensus building that needs to take place at the table. We are meeting on Wednesday morning at 7:30 a.m. I will be here at 7:25 this time, and, or maybe even earlier. But anyways, I think that, you know, what I presented tonight with an adjustment that actually David caught live, the deficit is actually 103, or just over 100,000 right now, based on the level of services that I just presented in draft form. That's going to change based on what we recommend in the Town Manager's Recommended Budget. And if the board's ALG representatives are going to push for us to be able to are going to push for us to be able to keep the number of what we just heard, then, then we'll do that. If, if the representatives want this to get balanced Wednesday morning, then we'll spend time making sure that we cut what was just presented by at least 100,000 to, to come in at an even budget. So I think the issues that come up tomorrow will be, or Wednesday will be use of free cash, excess levy capacity use. And there's been a lot of discussion about the DPW building and its role in the, in the model. And just to clarify, I think at the last meeting, it was suggested that the ALG members should work towards a consensus on whether or not to proceed with a project such as the DPW building. And I clarified during the meeting that in my experience, which isn't as long as some other folks, the, the role of ALG is, is not to decide whether or not to do a project, it's to, to help figure out how a project fits into the long-term plan. It's the select board and then the finance committee individually, although hopefully collaboratively, that make decisions on what to recommend to town meeting in terms of projects like that. So that's a little bit of a nuance, but I have a feeling we're going to spend a lot of time on that nuance on Wednesday morning. So I think having the board confirm its understanding of that to the two members that are representing you, I think would be helpful now, even though it's 11 o'clock. I think it may be worth spending a few minutes on, in addition to anything else that you wanted to cover.
Thank you. David?
So, you know, it's hard a little bit to translate the numbers at the end of your presentation into the model, kind of on the, on the, on the fly. And so it's hard to give feedback right now. I do want to understand why the reduction in free cash use. Or is it, maybe that was part of the, the misprint? I don't know. That. Because I thought last time we were talking about slightly more free cash, free cash use to get us down to close to the 3% floor. And so I'm a little confused on that. I don't necessarily need an answer right now, but I, I, I don't know, you know, I don't, I can't have a reaction now without, without seeing the, the, the model. So I, I wonder about that. I mean, in general, I think that the presentation is fine. I just wonder about a few of the particulars. I, I will say that there was a lot of confusion at the last finance committee meeting. As I've mentioned in a couple of these meetings, as far as I, you know, ALG has always come to a separate consensus on an operating override. As far as I can tell, ALG has never come to a separate consensus, consensus on a debt exclusion. And I said that. But when ALG, I guess I wasn't very clear. And I, I just, I didn't want to interrupt their discussion from, you know, the audience that they were saying that I, I meant that ALG shouldn't have any consensus at all, which is not what I said and, and not, not what I meant that, that ALG should not discuss the debt exclusion, which is not what I said and not what I meant. You know, there are a whole bunch of things that were said, none of which were correct. The only thing I've said is that, that the, ALG definitely comes to a separate consensus on the entire model, especially for the recommending year, which is the next year, but, and plans for out years, but has not come to a separate consensus on the debt exclusion like they do for operating overrides. And there's also, well, I, that, that, that's, that's it. I don't know what else to, to, to say here to work these numbers into the, into the whole model. You know, I would recommend that ALG this time on Wednesday, you know, maybe we ask the, the manager to put these in to the model. And then that's the point of discussion for ALG that we take under advisement and you guys come back to the, the board with any, you know, feedback that ALG has or whatever. I, you know, usually, I mean, that's, I think, common in the boards where they, if ALG wants to change something, then people go back to their respective boards with that feedback. But I'm open, I'm open to anything. You know, I'm not, I'm not trying to say the way it should be.
Is that doable? You're talking about the level services requests?
Well, you know, in, in, in this, John made some changes in use of free cash and, and the, and in the, and in the budget. And since those numbers are not yet in the whole model, it's hard to see the effect on the whole model. So it's hard to have a reaction before the meeting.
Dean?
Yeah, I'd, I'd be comfortable with, John, you, you made your presentation. You've got some feedback from us. I, I think I'd be comfortable with you adding the numbers into the model based on what you've heard tonight. You know, I, I think that's the best numbers we can come up with. And I, I don't, you know, we had some differences of opinion and some kind of minor things that we kicked around, but I think those are very minor differences. And I, I, I think you should proceed with, with putting the best numbers, the most accurate and supported numbers that are available. And I think you've got them. You know, the, a couple of the projects, you know, the, I can think of the, I think there was a, some concern raised by a few of us about the appropriateness and timing of the electronic message board is, you know, and there was concerns raised by me about the childcare and transfer station subsidy. And I was immediately overwhelmed by my colleagues. So I'm not going to fight that one anymore. But I think, you know, based on what you heard, I'd plug it into the model.
Does that sound?
Yeah, I mean, that we, and not necessarily that we should be doing this live, but if, if I put the level services budget in the, into the ALG model with the use of free cash up in the 1.6 range, which is what was, I was directed to do last time, it would result in a deficit of just over 100,000. If we got rid of the electronic message board, it would still be balanced. But, but that's, but that's not the, again, what was represented here tonight isn't our final recommendation. There are things that are going to change based on the feedback that we received. But I don't know that of the five of you, or maybe there was a little bit of support for that, actually, now that I remember. But why don't I put it in as a deficit? And that'll be something for the ALG to discuss? Does that work? Okay. Thank you.
So I have a question for David. You said the free cash use has been brought down since the, the last presentation. Are you talking about the request versus the recommended? Or are you talking about an amount that would bring us to closer to the floor? And what would that amount be if that's? Because I see Jim shaking his head and nodding. Like, it's not the difference between the 1.54 million and the 920,000 that you're talking about. You're talking about moving projects into free cash. So we're spending more of free cash, right?
Right. And so I'm a little confused by this. And I don't, I don't think we can sell this on the, on the fly. But the, the, the total capital shows the amount that I thought was, we were taking from free cash. But this shows nine, on the last page, page 18, shows 920,000, which is from free cash, which is less than we spent last year. And I believe we'll not spend free cash down to the floor, which is the finance committee's preference. It also relieves some of the future debt service. But I think it's, I am fine with what Dean and John just proposed.
Just to clarify, that's, the, the borrowing articles showing 681, those, both, both of those items are paid from free cash. So one of them is pay-as-you-go free cash, which means we pay for the full project. If you're looking at page 17 in the presentation, the 920 shown there is money we're going to take out of free cash and put directly into those nine or 10 projects. And they'll be paid for. The borrowing projects are projects that we're going to borrow for over 10, 15, or 20 years, depending on what they are. And the first year, we're going to pay from free cash. So that, that would make the first year needed free cash to be 1.6 million. So it hasn't gone down. It's just, it's, we're just showing how it's being spent.
Thank you for that. So the 681,462 is first year debt service for new borrowing?
Yes, and that would come from free cash. And then it would be worked into the model going forward.
Thank you, thank you for that. Then, yeah. So my, my only other feedback is, well, I mean, before I, I say that, somewhere in here, John, you said we were going to, you, you talked about the untaxed levy. And where was that? Because I'm now missing.
So on the, on the, on page 18 of the presentation, but when, at the ALG plan that was last published on November 22nd, the untaxed levy capacity was at 1.2 million. After that meeting, we increased it based on discussions at the board, from this board and from the ALG, we increased it to the number that showed on page 18, that's shown on page 18, 1.34.
Great. So I just, I just wanted to clarify that for myself so I could give, give feedback to our ALG reps. So we started in the model this year with a $1.2 million untaxed levy. And because the current model shows an increase in that, it means we were increasing our untaxed levy, but are $100,000 behind in that goal. Does that make sense? Right? I, I guess it's a little confusing, right? So the, the, the 1.34 million is actually, one way of solving this problem is to change that to 1.24 million, right? And then, then the problem would be solved. Another way would be to, to remove the variable message sign, you know, or, or make some other adjustments to the budget, right? And so I, I, I think leaving, my feedback is leaving this here and finding places to reduce is important. But we, you do have to make sure that, you know, John, in your presentation, that everybody in ALG knows that we are increasing the untaxed levy, not really in $100,000 in deficit, right? It's only in $100,000 in deficit, assuming that we're taxing less. So I, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, right? Because it's a really important point that we're taxing less. And based on that, we're behind $100,000 and we need to figure that out.
So I can't really weigh in on the question that we first started with about what the role of the ALG is and on what they need to come to consensus. And the overview on the ALG page is not really helping me that much. Is there a document that is a, an, an agreement, a charge with more specifics than this nice narrative?
On the bottom of that page, it links to the charter, which ALG agrees to or changes every year. I, I can find that and send it to you. It, it, it's there somewhere. That's how I find it, on the, on the ALG page. Okay, I'll, I'll find that and send it to you.
Jim?
I notice my brain isn't capable at 10 after 11 of engaging with any of these things, but I'm happy to go along with whatever the group wants. And I'm also happy to offer the suggestion that we settle the, the last three agenda items at a to-be-determined meeting in the soon future.
Bear with me. We have to do the license renewals, right?
Can we do them like the day after tomorrow?
Can we just do them, can we just hold on?
That's fine.
I'm sorry, Jim.
No, no, I, I can, I can, I'll just, just imagine that I'm not here, it'll all work out.
Yep. I don't think we have much left to do. Yes, I'm hoping. So are we moving on from ALG? Yeah. Yes. So number 16, we're going to, we'll approve the 2025 license renewals.
This is normally a 20-minute part of the meeting, but Lisa's worked to expedite it with a motion that is much more streamlined.
Yes, thank you. And if I could find my paperwork in my pile. Sorry. This may be the 20 minutes that we make up. Now.
So while you're looking for that, all the, all the license renewals are exactly as they were in the packet, except for one, which is a Marze Wine, which is a local winemaker. And Tom's going to explain what they're asking us or what they're asking you as licensing authority.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you, John. So Lisa had reached out to the owners of Marze Wine because she had noticed, going through the packets, that they hadn't submitted their renewal application. So the owner indicated to Lisa there were some obstacles. And one of those obstacles was the $500 farmer winery, I'm forgetting the exact title, but the pouring license that enables them to offer pours at their location. So we had a back and forth and conversation over email. And they formally requested the board to consider waiving the fee for FY, I'm sorry, for calendar year '25. We have not received their application. We did ask them today to work on that application and submitted ASAP. There are some building code-compliant issues that still need to be met. We're working and hoping that we can meet with them in the next few days to try to walk them through the process and work with them a little closely. So they've formally requested the board consider waiving the fee. At this point, we don't have an application, but we're hopeful that we will receive one from them.
Thank you. What is, what is the fee total? Just curious.
It's $500.
Okay. It's, I, I did find it on here. Oh. Yes. Oh, I found my list, yes. So I am lucky to have to only read the motions. So that's what I'm going to do. So move to approve the license to expose, keep for sale and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages to be drunk on premises as listed in the renewal master list, section 12. Move to approve common vittler's license to expose, keep for sale and to sell wines and, and malts to be drunk on premise as listed in the master renewal list, section 12. Move to approve retail package goods store license to expose, keep for sale and to sell all kinds of alcoholic beverages not to be drunk on premise as listed in the master renewal list, section 15. Move to approve the retail package goods store license to expose, keep for sale and to sell wines and malt beverages not to be drunk on premise as listed in the master renewal list, section 15. list, section 15. Move to approve the class two dealer licenses as listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve class one auto dealer licenses as listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve the entertainment license listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve bowling alley and billiard table license as listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve a 24-hour operating permit as listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve automatic amusement devices as listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve livery taxi licenses as listed in the master renewal list. Move to approve common vittler licenses as listed in the master renewal list. Jim?
I might have lost track, but second, 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 second.
So can I just interject one minute? Do we have to hold out Marze?
They're not on the list, so they...
Oh, they're not on the list? Okay, thank you. Thank you, thank you, thank you. So yes, I heard a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yay.
So just to be clear, that's one motion, even though you said move to approve a bunch of times. We just did one vote, one motion.
Yep.
So.
So we have.
I'm just saying.
You did second all of them.
Yeah, but he didn't, he only needed to second one. It's one motion, one vote.
I'm happy to have that reflected, yes, that was my intent, to do whatever was needed.
Yes, thank you.
To say, I'll be quiet now.
Yep. Ooh, that was good, even though it may have taken 20 minutes. Alyssa?
Do we need to schedule another quick virtual meeting in order to handle Marze? No.
We should wait to see.
What happens?
What happens.
Okay.
Do we need to resolve? Well, I wouldn't feel comfortable voting on waiving until we get their application done. Okay, good, thank you. So next, approve the 2025 select board fee schedule, which, are we?
This is something that may be possible to wait. It is something we've heard, the board has had on the agenda a few different times. I think there was just one clarification request. Is it still?
David?
I would like to make two changes to this, which may be too long for tonight.
Okay.
So I'm happy to discuss them now.
Should we carry it over till next time?
Yeah, that's up to you.
Okay, we'll do that, and we'll move on to ARPA.
Thank you. So in the packet was the most recent allocation list for the ARPA investment packet. It's actually in the last page of the CIP, which is at your table, if that's easier, although it's a pretty small type. We made changes reflective of the last discussion that the board had about ARPA, basically just reallocating the change, the leftover funding in any of the accounts to three areas, transportation, the Dog Park, and the 17 Woodbury Lane project. And I think I would ask that the board approve this allocation and also request that the board further authorize me to add any additional leftover funding to either of those three projects as we close out the year. There are a couple of things that are still finalizing themselves, and I'd hate to leave even a dime on the table.
So moved?
Are we discussing or no?
We can discuss after the motion.
Yep. Oh, no, I knew, yep.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Oops, yes, I was offering discussion, then I was taking him up on his quick. Alyssa?
So I just need some clarification. The board already voted to reallocate to three projects. I know I abstained from that. Jim, did you abstain also from that? Maybe not. So this vote is to just reaffirm that and allow you to add any more dollars to those specific three, or is there another new reallocation?
Well, so the last time this was brought forward, we just said any remaining amount. In this plan, we've actually put dollars in to show what the amounts and the changes are. The red is the numbers that projects are being reduced, and the black is the numbers that are being added. And so this is a more refined version of what was approved, using the theme of what was approved. And even though this is more refined, I'd like to further extend that authority to do more of that, to get this to be perfectly down to zero.
Oh, Jim?
I'm not sure we can let go of our requirement to approve ARPA changes. I think, I have this feeling that the law gives us that responsibility. Otherwise, I would have given this away to John a long time ago. You know, so we may need a short additional meeting to approve the final changes. But I could be interpreting the law wrong, I'm no lawyer. Can you convince me that this is okay, that we're allowed to give you this last-minute authority?
Well, I think we're doing the best we can to allocate things and putting them in writing as the best we can. I think the obligation under the federal regulations was to have things under contract, and I believe that if they're under contract, under allocations that the board supports and has been talking about for three years, I don't think it's outside of any, I think it'd be okay. And I think if it's not okay, we'll call a meeting to fix it. Does that work?
I'm comfy with that, thanks.
We're looming on the deadline of December 31st.
Hold on, we're calling, I'm calling a landline, or whatever you call it. Call a friend.
Okay, so as John had mentioned, is that as long as we, meaning the finance department, Teresa O'Leary, the treasurer collector, as John mentioned, is that we are required to have all paperwork on file by December 31st. And so tonight's request is to ensure that that full $7 million and change is being properly spent and the paperwork is filed with us. And so to John's point, the, I think, $17,000 Dog Park, $30,000 for transportation, and also 17 Woodbury, and the remaining monies that are being finalized, that we have the authority from you to ensure that that full amount is properly spent.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Are we all good? Yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes, I seconded it.
You want to call?
Clerk, do you want to take the roll?
Just ask for opposed and abstentions.
Okay, so there were four, four yays and one abstention.
Abstain.
Do you want me to pull 19 out of consent?
Yes, so the consent agenda is next. I would ask that you start with 19 and have it be pulled. So this is the deed for the sale of the 348, 352 Main Street to the Housing Authority for the McManus Manor project. The closing was supposed to be Monday or Tuesday, it's being pushed a week or so, and there's some additional paperwork that may be needed. So in addition to asking the board to approve the deed as it's in your packet, with, you know, maybe with a later date, the other ask that I have for the board is that you authorize me to execute any remaining documents that are necessary for the closing that were a part of the purchase and sales agreement.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. So that approves number 19 and that additional motion.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So starting with consent items, 20, appoint Jaclyn Saltzman as a full member of the Community Preservation Committee. Appoint Adam Nold as a full member of the DPW Facility Building Committee. Accepted donation of $360.50 from McKinnon Printing Company to be deposited in the Acton 250th Celebration Account. 23, accepted donation of $2,500 from Acton Lions Club in merchant holiday gift cards to be distributed at the discretion of the Senior Services Coordinator. 24, accepted donation of $2,500 from Acton Lions Club in merchant holiday gift cards to be distributed at the discretion of the Community Services Coordinator. 25, accepted donation of $375 to the Serve Gift Account from the Rotary Club of Acton Boxborough in merchant holiday gift cards. 26, accepted donation of $1,000 to the Serve Gift Account from St. Vincent de Paul in merchant holiday gift cards. 27, approve a one-day malt and wine license for Boston events at Narrow Park on June 21st, 2025. 28, approve a waiver of filing fee for $100 for 701 Main Street, re-submission of requests for certificate of compliance. 29, approve and sign conservation restriction for 328 Pope Road. 30, approve meeting minutes, November 4th, 18th, 25, pre-town meeting, and 25, post-town meeting. 31, authorize the town manager to execute the local acquisitions for natural diversity land grant. 32, request for extension of operating hours, Velvet Vine Cafe. Yeah.
Move to approve consent items 20 through 22 and 24 through 32 inclusive.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I just want to take note and thank the public. This $2,500 from the Acton Lions Club plus the next allocation. These funds are generated from all of the various sales and operations of the Acton Lions Club. We recently, last night, ended up our Christmas tree sale with the maximum number of trees ever sold and the maximum number of proceeds ever received. So this is the Acton Lions Club putting that money back into the community. So just wanted to thank everybody for their support of that event.
Thank you.
I move to approve consent item 23.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unless we have other things to do, I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.